Good evening. I call this July 13th, 2021, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville website. On July 16th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to the townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Councilmember Skargans Johnson has indicated she will not be able to attend tonight's meeting. Councilmember Rayo, let us know he will arrive as soon as he is able. Tonight's meeting includes two public hearings. Public address and public hearing comments were also accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. Comments received from interested parties that include a full name and address will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each, for a total of 30 minutes following in-person speakers. Sergeant Chad Penland has been a law enforcement officer for 20 years, 21 years, and is currently assigned to the Field Operations Division. He is our sergeant-at-arms this evening. Thank you for being here, officer. I have the pleasure of presenting the indication this evening, and it is short and sweet. Remember, it is the sides of the mountain which sustain life, not the top. It is at meetings like we are having tonight where ideas grow, and through our actions we seek to preserve and enhance the quality of life for our residents. And also, life is short. Be a goldfish. Please stand and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have anything they'd like to share at this time? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion and second to adopt this evening's agenda?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously, 5-0. There is one item on this evening's consent agenda, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Is there a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion also carries unanimously, 5-0. Has anyone signed up to speak in person for public address, sir?
Yes, sir. We do have one resident sign up to speak for a public address.
Okay. Those signed up for public address, if you please approach the microphone, your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. It's nice to see you, sir.
That one.
The one closest to you there.
Okay. Hello, my name is Michael Schlink, 416 Willingham Road, Morrisville. Congratulations to you and town staff for applying for and being named an All-American City. It's a wonderful achievement. Yes, it is July now, but like many other citizens, I am incredibly happy to see Morrisville continue to be an ally and declare Gay Pride Month in June. Since the First Town Proclamation in June of 2018, the leadership has made this proclamation to show greater acceptance, awareness, and inclusion for all our gay community, including members of my family. As one of my daughters reminded me, the movement tackles equality, inequality on all fronts, reflecting empathy for the strength of everyone, from personal commitment to the community in ways it can, from commemorating its milestones, to progress, to donating and voting. Along the same lines as town leaders, I urge you all to continue to use your empathy and follow the council code of ethics, and let's attack bad policy, or in this case, left-out policy and not the people. What I mean by left-out policy is this: nine communities in the state of North Carolina have passed an LGBTQ inclusive nondiscrimination from nearby towns like Carboro, Chappaqua Hill, Durham, and now Apex. I come here tonight to ask you pass a tangible inclusive nondiscrimination ordinance that other bodies have done across the country. The ordinance protects residents from discrimination in a range of areas, including sexual orientation, gender identity, and natural hairstyles. The ordinance ensures protection in employment, places of public accommodation such as restaurants, businesses, and hospitals. North Carolina's state motto is "To be, rather than to seem." So take a stance. This ordinance will make this town a catalyst to promote positive change in people and society, a more equitable, inclusive town to live and visit, an All-American City. Also, for context and history, as part of the bond referendum, please do not reinforce Jim Crow history with the town Civil War Park, which was on a previous award-winning plan for the town center. Do not let others try to make the public case for a civil war that was fought over slave, that was really fought over slavery and not state rights. Consider other viewpoints, and the Southern Poverty Law Center view that a new Civil War Park would be a reminder of segregation, white supremacy, intimidation of African-Americans. In closing, please consider, as other towns do, and establish a town art fund for collaborative art projects and support artistic and cultural exploration, connection, and understanding. Those funds could be used for a variety of projects: wall and sidewalk murals, as Durham and Raleigh do, bands for festivals, storytelling, and dance, to name a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone signed up? Else signed up, sir?
No, sir. There was no one else signed up, and there were no public comments received.
Via email, you mean. Okay, was there anyone else in the chambers who wanted to speak tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, public hearing. There are two public hearing items on the agenda: an ordinance extending the Town of Morrisville corporate limits to include 703 and 3109 Slater Road, and consideration of zoning map amendments and UDO text amendments related to land use plan implementation of the McCrimmon Extension Subarea Plan and the Transit Oriented Development District. Aaron Pritchard, Planner 2, will present the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you again.
You, too.
So there is one update I should mention for the annexation. The ordinance itself has been backdated to March 9th, 2021. You won't vote on the ordinance at this meeting. That would be the third meeting on July 27th, but I thought I'd mention it. This is to coincide with the date of the zoning map amendment for the properties that you voted to approve on that date. So the reason for it is because the property was, well, it was officially taken into the extraterritorial jurisdiction. However, we could not find good paperwork noting that. So we have an agreement with Durham County in which we would be allowed to annex the property. However, in order to avoid having to repeat the zoning map amendment process, we've decided to retroactively have the annexation be from March 9th, 2021. This will have tax implications, so the property owner would pay taxes effective March 9th rather than July 27th, or whenever the annexation would normally be approved. But I did confirm with the applicant, and they are okay with that. They just want to avoid having to repeat the rezoning process, so that's the only update at this time.
Okay, and do we have that in writing from them? That they're okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. I'd like to ask Attorney Gray if everything appears to be in order to make this change and do whatever we need to do.
Yes, sir. I think so. It's a voluntary petition, and since the property owner has consented to that change of the effective date, I think that's all in order.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that confirmation.
Sure.
Excellent. So, public hearing has already been open? Or are we opening it tonight? Remind me.
It is scheduled to be open tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
So, opening the public hearing, are there anyone, is there anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing, sir?
No, sir. There was no one signed up to speak for the public hearing, and no comments were received related to the item.
Okay. Would I entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. And a second from Councilmember Fender. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries 5-0 unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Pritchard. We'll see you in two weeks.
Yes, two weeks to vote for adopting the ordinance, and that would be the final meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Right, thanks.
Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will present the next item.
Okay, so I've got a few updates for you this evening. The first one is related to Raleigh-Durham International Airport and the navigation easement. I've just prepared a summary, and I'll read that first, and then we can move on to some of the other items we've been discussing over the last few meetings. So first of all, there are some proposed changes to the navigation easement language. I'll get into that. So, since my last presentation before the Town Council, senior members of RDU staff, as well as several members of the RDU Airport Authority Board, requested to hold a meeting with the town's mayor, mayor pro tem, and town staff. The mayor and mayor pro tem have asked staff to provide an update on the results of this meeting to the rest of Town Council, which I will briefly summarize tonight, but I will also provide further follow-up to Town Council with a more detailed document via email. So at this meeting, RDU reiterated their concerns regarding RDU's exposure to lawsuits related to airplane noise, and asked that the town maintain the current zoning, which does not allow any residential uses along the McCrimmon Corridor. RDU acknowledged that the town has followed the current FAA land use guidance, but that the conditions related to the function of the airport may change over time, and that this is a source of their, is one source of their concern. Staff noted that the town understands RDU's concerns, and that this is the reason the town will not allow single-family homes, residential subdivisions, duplexes, or town homes into the current extent of the town's most restrictive airport zoning overlay. Instead, the town is only proposing to allow a small number of multifamily developments, which are subject to internal sound mitigation, and which will require navigation easement granted to RDU. Town staff expect that most of the development along the McCrimmon Parkway Extension will provide a mix of retail, office space, life science uses, biomanufacturing, and research labs, among the, along with the existing uses of the Wade Competition Center. At the meeting, RDU staff also requested that the town change the wording of the required easement to match the language they had previously provided the town, and that I had presented to Town Council at your June 8 meeting. Town staff noted that based on previous meetings held with RDU staff, the town has proposed to amend the UDO to require an navigation easement for every new multifamily development in the town's airport overlay zoning districts. The town will require an easement for the perpetual right and easement for the free and unobstructed overflight of aircraft of her property. However, staff is uncomfortable using the town's authority to require property owners to agree to all the specific items in RDU's preferred easement language, and that we think it is best for developers to work directly with RDU when executing this easement. There was one specific item that arose at this meeting that I'd like to be clear about, and this was related to affordable housing. Let me just be clear that affordable housing has not, will not, and is not part of the current proposed amendments. The town is not placing affordable or workforce, workforce housing in the McCrimmon Parkway Extension area. Now, based, based on this meeting, town staff do have two recommendations. The first is to place the RDU easement into the administrative manual. This does not require Town Council's approval and would not change any requirements on development via the town's zoning authority. It would simply be a resource for town staff to show developers what easement language would be required by RDU. The second recommendation would require Town Council's approval, and I'm going to talk about that a little later tonight. Staff proposed to require the navigation easement be executed prior to site plan approval, as opposed to being required prior to certificate of occupancy. Essentially, this requires an executed navigation easement prior to the town issuing any development approvals within the airport overlay zoning districts. So if you'll see before you on the slide tonight, about halfway through the paragraph, we have marked out issuance of certificate of occupancy for a building and changed it to prior to site plan approval. Staff recommend this. Again, this would move up when the easement must be executed in the timeline of development. So currently, a building could be built, and right before folks move in, the easement would be required. If we move it up to, the town moves it up to prior to site plan approval, that means the town has not given any kind of development approval until the easement has been executed. Staff have discussed this, and we feel it is, it is probably the best policy at this time for this. The, the only other language that has changed is the last sentence, which references the administrative manual, which we will put the easement language that RDU has provided us. And again, that does not change what is required. It is simply a resource that myself as a staff member can show a developer and say, this is what the airport is going to require for an easement. So that is my update. Again, I will send a more detailed follow-up later on. Are there any questions related to that right now?
Councilmember Robotti, please.
Yeah, hi. I do have a question. So, we've been back and forth with the RDU Airport Authority about them not wanting multifamily in that area. What would exactly prevent them from just refusing to sign off on the easements and preventing site plans from going through that include multifamily?
That is an excellent question. I'm looking over at our town attorney. That has not hit me at this point yet, so.
Not sure I've actually thought about that one either, council member. I would think that if our ordinance has allowed the construction of a multifamily development, as long as it met the criteria in the UDO, and if the Airport Authority were to somehow refuse to sign a navigation easement, then, again, particularly since this is now moved, this form of it has moved to the administrative manual that we, council and town staff could proceed without that.
So, this isn't a requirement, so it's not a hard requirement for a developer to obtain sign-off from the Airport Authority? It's, it's what, a suggestion? Like, I'm just trying to understand what we're trying to get to.
Sure, I mean, it's a requirement that requires two parties to participate. So your question was, what if the other party didn't participate? But I will say, in the run-up to this and the various sundry meetings we've had, there's at least a dozen recorded navigation easements on record in land around here, including in Morrisville. So the airport, the airport wants the navigation easement if there's going to be multifamily development. So I understand you have a theoretical question. I'm not sure it's a real concern.
I don't consider it super theoretical. I mean, that's absolutely what I would do if I didn't want multifamily there. I, you know.
I think at the end of the day, Town of Morrisville controls land use.
Okay.
And if a party would not refuse to comply with a requirement, then we could march on.
Okay, if that's what you tell me, I believe it.
That's a good question, though.
And to just piggyback on that, I'd say, to this point, I think everyone's been going in good faith, and if we were to feel that one of the parties was no longer operating in good faith, we would have the opportunity to revisit this and just make it go away. I mean, we're, we're trying to help them out.
Okay.
So if they don't see it that way, we can always change the rules a little bit at a later time. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
So, that is a great question, and I agree. I think they, they want this agreement. RDU wants this agreement. I will tell you, what I'm more concerned about is that they want the agreement the way they want it. And with all the, and we've, we've seen some of that language, with everything spelled out, and they are not, I mean, their words were, "We are not going to negotiate. This is not a negotiation." So I think I'm more worried about, you know, a developer who comes in and says, "Well, I do want to negotiate. I would like to, I don't like this wording. I'd like it tweaked a little bit." And RDU is not, I mean, they said, "We are not going to negotiate." So that's why we talked about putting a sample in the documents so that developers are kind of forewarned of what is going to be the agreement that RDU will find acceptable. So I, I don't, but I guess, you know, to the town attorney's point, you know, we can, we kind of oversee the use of the land, so I guess in the end, council can, we can make an exception if we really wanted to. Not, not that we're looking to. I want to make that clear. I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're looking to do that, but that's good to know, I guess. I do have another question for you, too, Frank. This wording that's, that's here in front of us, have you reviewed this, and is this okay with you now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, I think I have had the questions in a similar line, but more about, do we put a timeline? You know, if they should keep dragging it, then pretty much, I know Chris and I have talked about this briefly. This first one year is going to be pretty much a rat race of who comes in and whose site plan is approved, and then, you know, they are in line with the other restrictions that are coming, the backside of it. If, if RDU is holding, you know, by not approving it, so what are the measures that we have in place? We say, like you, once it is submitted, after 60 days, it's automatic, you know, do it. We have to have some kind of a timeline, otherwise it's not fair for the development community who's putting aside plan submission.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that was an excellent question. I'm embarrassed to say I hadn't thought about it to this point, mostly because when we, we talked to RDU staff, we say, "Look, we're going to now require an navigation easement for every development in this area. You are going to be very busy." And they've said to us, "That's fine. We, we want it. We just want to protect the airport as much as we can." If there's a, I'm hesitant to put a shorter timeline than that, but if there is a timeline you'd like, if there's something, and I'm, I'm looking at our town attorney again, as...
Well, I would say, you know, based on my experience, multifamily developers are not without resources. I mean, they, they have counsel, they have engineers, and they came in with a site plan, and they felt like they were being strung out or given a runaround. We would hear about it real quick, and they have, you know, they had the ability to stomp their feet and bang the table, and, and so it's not like they're, they could be outgunned. I mean, they would have lawyers and advocates, you know.
Absolutely. So, so, like, obviously, they have their counsel, but from our point of view, it would be good, like, especially this area, when they come as part of the pre-submital, like saying, "This is your number one thing." You know, just keep this going, and by the time you get the submittals, or at least it is, you have an answer, and not like after the fact.
Yeah, I'll just say, my sense in working with RDU is that, that, again, that might happen. I do not expect that to happen. That, that does not seem to be what, what we've been working with them, and I, and I think if, if we said, "Look, our town council said, 'Okay, we'll take that away of the requirement if you're going to be like, you know, if you're not, you know, kind of act like that.'" I, I just don't see that, I don't, I don't predict them, you know, holding up projects in any ways. We actually have one project that's been, we've been talking with, and, and we already told them, "Look, if you're certain you're going to move forward, go ahead and reach out to RDU. You'll be our first case." So again, I can't guarantee it, but I, in our conversations with them, you know, and the reason I think they're, they're pushing more on the navigation easement language now is they realize the council is on board with some of the zoning amendments, and they're just doing whatever they can to protect RDU. Again, if, if we, you know, we, we and planning staff deal with the developers, once they get into the process of development very regularly, we will hear if something like that is happening, and we'll certainly come back to council and consult with the town attorney. But again, I don't expect them to, to act in that manner.
Sounds good, thank you. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, with regards to you being already in talks with a developer that is looking at that area, have they, are they aware, or what is their feedback on having to go to the RDU for the easement?
Yeah, so, you know, even before we got to this point in the text amendments, we already, as far as planning, required that if you're in this area, you contact RDU, you let them know what's going on, you get at least, at least get an email or a letter from RDU saying, "All right, we're aware of the development happening." The feedback from this developer is, "While that's an additional burden, is there any way we could not do that yet?" And I said, "No, that's, this is kind of what we're leaning towards. We want to work with RDU as much as possible." And then after I said that, they said, "Okay, we'll contact them." And I said, "Here's the contact info." It's, so.
And did you show them the language?
I did not show them the specific easement at that meeting. I'm trying to, I might have sent in a follow-up email, but I don't remember exactly if I did. Yeah.
I'd be curious to know what they think about RDU's language that you're going to put in the administration, administrative manual.
As you noted, that's their test case.
Yeah.
Anything else, Councilmember Fender?
No.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Just one more comment, Chris, too. I like the idea that you're putting the approval earlier on in the development process than later. That, that makes a lot of sense, so thank you for coming up with that.
Thank you, yes. We, we talked about it, and I just think it clarifies it so much for everyone, so, thank you.
Okay, did you want to give other updates before we do more public hearing?
Actually, the last time, the public hearing came first, and I think it was beneficial to our discussions, so if you wouldn't mind, let's, we'll start with public hearing before I give other updates.
Okay. Public hearing remains open. Is there anyone here to speak in person in this public hearing? Town Clerk Smith?
No, sir. There was no one signed up for in-person public hearing comments, but there were two comments received.
Okay. Let me ask you real quick, is there anyone here who wanted to sign up for the public hearing and didn't? Okay, seeing none, go ahead, Town Clerk.
The first comment from Scott Humphrey, Edgewater Ventures, 3105 Glenwood Avenue, Raleigh, North Carolina. "Good afternoon. We would like to submit to the town the following comments regarding the UDO. Overall, we are very encouraged, encouraged by, and supportive of the progress that the town has made thus far in the UDO process. After reading through some of the proposed text changes in more detail, one concern that we have is the definition of biomanufacturing may be a bit too restrictive in terms of attracting similarly, similarly innovative science and technologically applications to the town. As such, we would like to recommend that the definition be broadened and modified so that similar innovation uses such as, uses such as agriculture, technology, clean tech, green energy, and other high-tech life sciences are approved under uses under the definition. We appreciate the town's consideration of this recommendation, and we are happy to discuss in more detail if any members of the town have any further questions." The next comment, Tim Skinder, Vice President, King Street Properties, 900 Perimeter Park Drive, Morrisville, North Carolina. "In advance of tonight's Town Council meeting, I would like to submit the following comments for consideration by the town. I am Tim Skinder, a Vice President with King Street Properties and the current owner of East Ridge at Perimeter Park, an eight-building, 480,000-square-foot business in Research Park at the intersection of Airport Boulevard and Perimeter Park Drive. We are among the largest owner/operators of life science real estate in the world, focused on serving the complex needs of science-based companies and institutions. First of all, we are supportive of the town's thoughtful approach to the ongoing changes to the UDO and use standards. Given the other changes occurring in the UDO and use standards and proposed text amendments, we would encourage the town's new definition for biomanufacturing use to also include high-tech, advanced science processes that utilize the same sort of infrastructure as biomanufacturing facilities, without precisely qualifying as a biomanufacturing use. Some examples would include green energy technology, small, small molecule therapies, and advanced clean tech processes amongst others. It may seem like a minor detail, but this would provide further indication of the town's thoughtful, forward-thinking perspective on such matters. Below, we have included minor comments to the proposed update's use definitions of biomanufacturing and research lab. I would be happy to discuss these recommended tweaks further with the Town Council or town members at the appropriate time. Respectfully, Tim Skinder. All comments were submitted to Town Council in their entirety and have been added to the public record."
Okay. Thank you, sir. So we've had this one open for a while. I entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing, if that's the council's desire.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously, 5-0. So the public hearing is closed at this time, if you want to continue presenting.
Sure. Okay, we just had a few more items that have been under discussion. I'll just fast-forward to the multifamily spacing standard along McCrimmon Parkway and the Gateway Overlay. So we've been through several iterations of this. I think after the last meeting... I think after the last meeting, what I heard is, council would like to mandate a few specific requirements, including additional tree preservation, some form of vertical mixed use. And then we've also heard consistently that you want to allow flexibility for developments which provide multifamily dwellings only on upper floors, similar to Grace Park. So what I proposed here is, at the last meeting, I heard an 800-foot spacing distance requirement, and up to a 1,500-foot, and I, I just put 1,200 to split the difference, and, and see kind of council's feelings about that. The only other thing I added was that a collector street could also, basically, basically apartment could, a multifamily development could be across the street from, across a collector street from another multifamily development. And I have an updated conceptual map later on in the presentation. The, so, so basically, we went from incentivizing certain require, certain, certain items to requiring vertical mixed use, which is B, and additional tree saves, so 150% of whatever they would normally be required by the UDO. And then D would be 150% of the required street yard planting. So if a building's built along McCrimmon, they would have to provide 150% of the required buffer. Now, I will note that the, the last sentence of D, it would reduce the buffer width to 15 feet, because that is the minimum and maximum set, that is the minimum setback from McCrimmon, that we've, we pitched to help the pedestrian friendliness of the corridor. Let me scroll down two slides. So this would be the conceptual, this would be, based on the current language, this would be the conceptual spacing of multifamily. So i, if you'll notice, the one difference I've added the, because these are two collector streets, International Drive Extension, along with the Mooresville East Connector, these are both identified in the transportation plan as collector streets, so it would add slight more flexibility on that. But, but overall, 1,200-foot spacing. And I guess I'm looking for any council's thoughts on, on these requirements.
Tim got her thing up first, and then Councilmember Fender, then myself.
So, Chris, just go back to the map for a minute.
Sure.
This may not happen, what we have in front of us. You're just trying to show us maybe like the worst-case scenario, in my opinion.
We could describe it that way, and again, I'll, I'll note that this map is based off the current shapes of parcels, so they might be broken up any which way, depending on who buys what, and where the land gets traded around. For instance, this one right here, if you see my mouse, this, this land has all been subdivided from Wake Competition Center down to Southport, so there's, there's, I think, 12 lots in this area. They could be combined currently, but it's, I, I highly doubt it's going to be this large of a development.
They have other plans anyhow, that, yeah. Okay, so, depending on which green blob parcel goes first dictates everything else after that.
It, it dictates quite a bit, and right now, of course, this one, at the bottom right, this one is already an apartment complex, so we've kind of got it set on one side, and it really depends on the next one that's approved, would really dictate a lot.
Okay, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate the changes that you made.
Thank you.
Specifically C, preserving 150% of the required percentage of existing tree canopy. One question I did have was in D, what is, can you describe option one of the street yard buffer?
Yeah. So there's two options for every buffer. Option one is generally wider with less plantings. Option two is generally narrower with more plantings, or some kind of wall required. I'm looking it up now, but I'm almost certain the, the buffer along McCrimmon would require a wall for an option two. Didn't think that was something council would want, so we put option one, but reduced the width to 15 feet.
On the same slide, can you explain to me, number, letter E, and whether or not if they have just retail on the first floor, they can build as many multifamilies as they want, and there's no distance requirement at all?
The way it's currently written, that would be correct. So if, if the ground floor was not multifamily at all, if it was some other use, they would be allowed to have upper-floor multifamily. And, and again, this came out of comments that I'd heard about, maybe a Grace Park-style development, something similar to that, and allowing more of that mixed use along the corridor. Again, that language could be tweaked, if you're not comfortable with having one floor be, you know, commercial, then several floors above being more multifamily.
Okay, I would, I would prefer personally that that goes away completely, because I thought the whole idea was to limit by spacing the number of apartment units in general in developments, and this really undercuts that completely, because I imagine, if they're going to do vertical mixed use, they're probably going to have the first floor be totally retail, so it sort of makes everything else not matter. So, but I think you need to hear from more of the council in supporting that. Also, in looking at the different 800 feet and seven, and 1,200 feet, those are both leading to seven developments. And I think that I am more comfortable with just having five developments as per the 1,500. So I appreciate that this spacing is in between, but it still allows the same number of developments as 800.
Sure.
So I would wonder if the council would be supportive of changing that 1,200 feet in A to, back to 1,500, and then just limiting the apartments in this part of town, because we have more apartments coming lots of other places. That's something that we've heard from our residents. We'd love to continue hearing from residents pro and con, and developers, we want to hear from everybody on that. I'll recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
I also support getting rid of letter E. And as far as the, the 1,200 or 1,500 feet, it seems to me that there's a lot of things that could be built along that corridor that don't have to be multifamily. I would be supportive of going back to 1,500 feet. I mean, I think, oh god, I just blanked on your name, Mayor Colley, sorry, has a great point about, you know, we are, I mean, I think that the residents, by and large, have been really understanding about apartments in town center, apartments in the TOD, but I just don't see the need to. You know, I would like to see us encouraging other types of development in this area.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
For me, I think 1,200 is a compromise, I'm perfectly okay going back to 1,500. I, I don't think that's fair. And also, I would like to keep E, because the whole reason, over the period of years and years, that we have talked is have a multi, like a mixed-use community, and not a multi, just a multifamily, because the BAC or, you know, RAC, everyone was coming with one use, and that was the reason we encouraged them, to have a dual use other than just multifamily. By doing that, you're creating the businesses there, and creating the vibrant kind of an atmosphere. Otherwise, I can't imagine, when you drive through it, it will be a couple of apartments, and then some bio-pharma, so this whole retail and commercial component is completely missing. I think this is the only piece that we have, that I'm envisioning as more of Grace Park, and to go down, I know, Cameron Village and other areas, who have a lot of downstairs retail and multifamily. So I'm perfectly fine with E, because that, that brings the community together, and also promote our local businesses, which are really hurting.
Councilmember Ralph, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to the 1,500, but I mean, I'm fine with either one. I do think we need to be sensitive to, you know, having, at least addressing the concerns of, not too many apartments, but just, you know, maybe a little bit more space in town. I completely agree with Councilmember Garamella, though, I think the whole purpose here is to create a Grace Park-type environment. My vision for this area is, I've, I've said it, and I'll say it again, is the North Hills, you know, Innovation District, I've been beating that like a dead horse, but I think that calls for, I think, 1,400 units, and, you know, mixed use and retail, and like spaces for entrepreneurs. I think that's what we need to have. So how, how we get there, whether it's 1,200, 1,500, I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's my thought. I just don't want to hinder that happening. Chris, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, I, I propose the, the ground floor, so partly it came out of the Grace Park discussion, partly it came out of developer called me and said, you know, if you don't allow any kind of, you know, if you, if you simply require a, a, you know, distance between two developments, you are not going to have any mixed use, you're going to have simply, you're basically limiting folks to, you know, this use or that use, and so not a mix. We're also requiring vertically mixed use along thoroughfares, collector streets, so that, that might be mute. It's kind of my thoughts. I, I get a little uncomfortable trying to make, you know, more policy decisions. I would say that increasing the, the distance between other styles of multifamily, and maybe trading off with some kind of allowance for things with a vertically mixed use, might be a good compromise, but again, it is a council's discretion.
Okay, we've all had a chance to weigh in, and I had mine up just before the Mayor for Tim. Could you clarify that everything in this corridor will have at least 50% on the first floor?
Say that one more time.
Everything on this corridor will have 50% of some kind of mixed use on the first floor.
So this would be multifamily development specifically, would have 50% mixed use if it's on a major thoroughfare, minor thoroughfare, collector street. So those are, those kind of streets are your McCrimmons, your International Drive, the Connector Street that would run from Airport to McCrimmon, Airport Boulevard itself, but only multifamily would have that mixed use.
So there's still the opportunity for, to create a Grace Park with making E go away. We don't need to allow closer spacing. The market can still support that. It's not like we're making that go away.
Currently, the way it's written, if, let me scroll down to my map here, if all of this was, was built out, all the apartments that were shown on this were built out, and someone wanted to build right here, and have any kind of multifamily, you know, anywhere, I, I think we'd have to say no, per the way the text reads, even if it was, you know, exactly like Grace Park, just because if it, the way it reads is any multifamily that's provided, would have to meet those standards. So developments which contain multifamily dwellings would have to meet those standards. So that, again, that's, that's why I had included this, kind of gives it some more But to answer your question, no, I would say no.
Okay, because other buildings could have retail on the first floor. They could choose to do that.
Oh, yeah, sorry, correct, correct. I, I'm, I'm speaking specifically to multifamily, you're right. There, there could be mixed use as far as retail ground floor, commercial office upper floor. You're correct.
So to go back to the map of your compromise, so essentially, if we keep E in, everything could be green, if they put retail on the first floor. This entire corridor could be apartments.
That is correct.
That is my fear. I just want to make that clear. So to address my colleagues, I think if we leave E in, I don't think we get Grace Park, but I think we get a lot of apartments as a very possible outcome. And I think that we can create a Grace Park destination atmosphere at 1,500, and making E go away, because I think that the market will support retail in this space, especially with Wake Competition Center becoming a destination in that space, and I think that there's other things coming in, like the rush hour, carting, and things like that. So I just wanted to share those thoughts. And Mayor for Tim?
So we've been, we've talked about this over several meetings, Chris, so just remind me again, when we, when, when you, when we started in the beginning, it was 1,500 feet?
It was.
Did you give it, you gave us options?
It's been a little bit all over the place. It did start at 1,500, so it started, okay, that's right. So when we started, we had the number higher, and provided incentives to get closer together. Now, I think through the council meeting discussion, it's back to, we need to mandate certain things, and have it just a set number, is where we've ended up.
Okay, okay, yeah, now we're, okay, we're mandating more, okay. I, I was always comfortable with 1,500, first of all, I wasn't, I don't, I don't, I'll say it again, I didn't want multifamily out here at all, so, but I lost that battle a while back during the land use plan. So I was fine with the, the option of the 1,500 feet, so in 3A, you know, 1,500 feet. I'm, I'm comfortable with E, too, and I think I said that at the, the last meeting, anything that would be no limit to distance requirements, but I do hear what several council members are saying about, you know, this vertical mixed-use development is, is important. Would, would it make sense to keep E, but to, to have some other kind of minimum distance requirement? And I, I'm really throwing that out to the rest of the council, not, because obviously you're okay with the way it is written, but that, that might help with, you know, what, with what some other council members are concerned about. So, so for, you know, if we, if we went back to A being 1,500 feet, and then E could be 800 or 1,200 feet, and just give another option.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, so I agree with Mayor Protem and the mayor, I can go to 1,500 feet distance, whether it's 1,200 or 1,500 is fine with me. I understand that 1,200 was a compromise, but either way, the, one thing I wanted to speak to, that I think goes back to what Mayor Colley was trying to point out, is B does allow for multifamily developments to have a mixed use, 50%, if it is facing a major road. So does that mean, like, on your map, these, these green blobs that along McCrimmon Extension, that, if those were all apartments, that would have to be 50% uses allowed in the back?
So a, any of the, basically, if you see any of the streets along here, McCrimmon, the gray lines that I drew, which are going to be collector streets, Airport Boulevard, even Southport, if a multifamily faces those streets, the side facing that street, 50% of that would have to be one of those mixed use that we've identified.
Yeah, so then, you know, I, given that, you know, and given what the mayor, Mayor Protem are saying, you know, I like, I like Mayor Protem's suggestion of, like, keeping E, but making a distance requirement. But then I was also just thinking, throwing out there, too, another option may be, if you get rid of E, but making B 75% or 100%, some sort of retailer, I guess it's more than retail that's allowed, but some other use along that entire front that faces McCrimmon could be another option. I don't know how the other council members feel about that, but I'm going to throw that out there.
Councilmember Robati?
So I understand the, the point about how we have to, you know, like, I understand we have to compromise where necessary, but the thing is, I, my concern is that you could talk all you want about 50% of the first floor has to be retail, and then, you know, sure, build it up 10 floors, you know, but I think that if we, if E is in there, E is my specific concern at this point. I loved Councilmember Fender's suggestion about B, but E is my specific concern, because my feeling is that wherever we allow multifamily, we are going to get multifamily. And so, I mean, to me, even at 1,500 feet, we're allowing a lot of multifamily, with way more than I want, even at 1,500 feet. And if you say that, if you say that a, a development can go there as long as it has retail on the first floor, you're not going to get bio- as long as it has retail on the first floor, you're not going to get bio, biochemical companies, you're not going to get entrepreneur space, you're not going to get anything except multifamily with retail on the ground floor. And I mean, I, I guess there's a place for that. But I, I think this is too much multifamily with retail on the ground floor now, much less with E in there saying that, you know, as long as you, as long as you do 100% on the ground floor, then you're fine. I mean, we, that's going to be nothing but apartments over there with ground floor. You know, I mean, there'd probably be some great stuff on the ground floor, stuff I'd be excited to shop at. But, you know, I'll go back again to the fact that we have to pay attention to our road situation, our school situation. Like, we can't support all this development.
Okay, I don't see anyone else with their things up, so we can sort of more free form. Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what my suggestion was because I think maybe, maybe I wasn't clear. The option that I was suggesting was if, get rid, if you want to get rid of E, get rid of E. But it, and, but to allow that multi-use Grace Park feeling, then the, then the multifamily developments that are 1,500 feet apart allow them to, well, right now we're requiring 50% of the first floor being some other use. An option is to have 100%.
Yeah, which I loved.
And, and, but only those multifamily developments and not have E.
Yeah, it seems a lot of this discussion has morphed incentives into, actually, that's a great idea and we require them. So that's sort of the direction we're going.
So I'd be a little bit leery of. It's not going to happen.
Yeah, I, I'm a little leery of requiring the full first floor. I think already we're asking a lot, but I think 50% will get us closer to what we want. But my, as Councilmember Rabadi mentioned, E is my biggest concern. And the fact that they will, there's a very strong possibility that they will do whatever they're allowed to do.
But the thing is, TJ, like, I mean, we're requiring a lot. Okay, I mean, if you, you know, you're more familiar with these things than I am. And if you say that we're requiring a lot, then I believe you. But the fact is that they're going to build this stuff and then leave. And we're going to be stuck with it. And so to me, it's our responsibility to require that that area be developed in a way that we're happy with and that the people, I mean, I live here. I don't think we're going to have that many developers that live here, you know? And I think that, I mean, maybe we are requiring too much, but you're not really going to convince me that nobody's going to want to build on it if we require 100% retail on the first floor. I just don't believe, you know? So that's, that's what I'm, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we're requiring too much. I think we're just trying to find the balance. But yeah, looking, or Councilmember Garamella, please.
I'm just thinking, I think, I don't know, at the end of the day, what we are trying to achieve here is it's trying to reduce the number of apartments, get it. But this is our only area that we have that can generate a good tax revenue. So how do we use that, you know, to our advantage? We are single focused towards multifamily. There are many number of uses, like, you know, biopharma and others that can come here. There, we didn't even talk about, you know, brick and mortar is still, you know, I understand with COVID, but there are many forms which are coming in and a perimeter is almost getting full. So I can see some of them coming here. And with retail, staying almost 20 years in Morrisville, I've seen none of our retails are being successful. It has struggled. You go down, you know, where Hardestest complex is, almost 10 to 20, or 30% of that is empty. You go to Grace Park, the same thing, they're, they're empty. They're struggling. You go down like where Food Lion Complex is, they are struggling to keep and people are going and rolling. So we're not creating a sense of a place, you know, including Park West. You know, we got, we lost very good restaurants from there. So by focusing more on multifamily, we're not giving a chance for the others to come. And we are, you know, like, I see, why are we saying 150% required for multifamily, the, the Prizo? We are not talking about the biopharma industry. So can they come and clear cut everything? If the retail comes in, are, we are not telling them to basically keep 150. So we are so focused in our language is always multifamily here. So I, I feel like we need to have a broader sense and think of how to space it. But at the same time, this area has, is our only shot to get it going the right way. And sometimes I feel we're just looking one way, a tunnel vision.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fender, please.
Well, I just want to point out that, I mean, even though we're talking about the multifamily developments in those five or six areas right now, that doesn't mean that in that other space that biopharma or other uses couldn't go in those locations. I think we're still going to have that. I don't think anyone's saying we're not going to allow that in those areas. So I guess I don't understand the concern there. And then I also want to point out too that, I mean, retail is doing very well. I mean, the, the restaurants or other places that are weak, they get, they close down. But Meekan Coon, I can, can never park there, find spacing to park there. The, the nail salon I have been going to for the past nine years, the dentist I've been going to for the past nine years, Park West is very vibrant and plenty of restaurants there. So I think it would be, I, I see nothing wrong with encouraging retail in this area. And I think we need it, we want it. If we're going to have, like, weight competition being a destination, those people are going to want to go for lunch somewhere or coffee or go to a bookstore or go get a pedicure, whatever. I think the retail will, won't have a problem in that area with the other uses. So I, I guess I am, I, I think we are on the right path with allowing multifamily but restricting it and then also encouraging other uses. And if it means that we specify retail or business activity center uses on the first floor facing McCrimmon, I, I think that is a, not a bad requirement to put in our UDO.
I think that's very well said. I think that probably aligns with the vision that has come through the land use plan and that we've all sort of thought about for this area. So not seeing, uh, Mayor Protem.
So just a couple of thoughts. I think if we really want to have a vibrant retail area in this part of town, I think you're going to have to have residents there. It's, it's not enough to say that the business community is going to keep the retail and restaurants afloat. I, I think you, you, you've got to have residential to make it, again, vibrant. And, and I will tell you, you know, I've lived here for 24 years. When I first moved here, the Outlet Mall was a vibrant place to go. And I will tell you, I live as far from that Outlet Mall as you probably can get in Morrisville, and I hardly would go there. So, and, you know, it's not that far away. It's like just across town and we're in a little town. But I didn't live right around the corner and you would kind of forget about that it was there. So I think if you, if you're looking to do a North Hills, if we're looking to do a North Hills, you know, not as big as North Hills. And I'm mentioning that because that was mentioned a little while ago. If, if that's, if that's what we want, a really vibrant, you, you better have residential. And again, that's, I, I, I think the 1,500 feet is good. I think if you want to, if you want to put E in there with some kind of up, some kind of limit, I could live with that. I couldn't live with it the way it is written right now, though.
Okay, so that's, um, not the first time I heard that people would be okay keeping E in if there was some kind of more limit. And I would say that's what the 1,500 is, is the limit that we're talking about. So if you could dig in, because I think we're pretty close to something that, at least a consensus to approve at 1,500 and getting rid of E, but we're not quite there. So can anyone explain to me what would make E tolerable? To keep it in? Because I'm not there yet.
Mayor, could I perhaps make a suggestion?
Please.
And, and just to recap, I think the last version that all of you saw had that tiered spacing requirement of 1,500 feet, 800 feet, 500 feet, where there were incentives for certain things. Based on the discussion at the meeting, we got rid of some of those tiers and required versus incentivizing. And, and really focused then on just the vertical mixed use and trees and landscaping, took out the parking garage component. There was a discussion about what you really wanted. So I'm wondering if maybe we go back to some of those tiers. I'm hearing a number of you saying that you would be okay with a 1,500 foot spacing. So just want to throw out there that we start at the 1,500 feet and then maybe allow to go down to the 800 feet. That was in your last version, if you did 100% ground floor, non-residential. And, and just for some additional background, we originally started with a 50% because we know that a lot of these developers provide amenities. So leasing offices and fitness centers, we envisioned probably going into some of that space as well. That could go somewhere else in the development, it could go in the back of the building, it could go in a back building. It's going to be more difficult, but it can be done. So just throwing out a suggestion, going to the 1,500 with 50% ground floor and then reducing it to 800 if it's 100% ground floor and non-residential.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
I think 800 is too low, no matter what they do on the ground floor. I think 800 is too low. But, you know, now that, actually, now that you say like health clubs and amenities for the members on the first floor, I don't actually mind that. Like, I don't mind that as a, like a gym or a leasing office as a street facing thing. I don't, I don't care about that. So, I mean, if that's what is really going to go in the other 50%, then 50% retail is fine with me. But I, I still don't want E. And if we, if we do do a tiered system, I'd like to see 1,500 and 1,200. I don't want to go to 800. 800 was like, was like seven apartment buildings.
Right, but 1,200 is also seven apartment buildings.
And that's a lot of apartment buildings, I'm just saying. But I'm saying in the spirit of compromise.
Understood. Quick question, the last time we saw this, did E exist? I don't remember it.
Let me scroll back up.
That broad thing being in the earlier one. Okay, so that's a new addition and I think that's what's maybe throwing us for a loop a little bit.
Yeah, I, I.
Because that's really a catch-all that sort of throws everything else away.
It was, so they're all a little different. It was sort of based on C from the last time you saw this. But they also had to provide all required parking as structured parking. So it had to be 100% ground floor mixed use as well as all required parking had to be structured parking.
Right, okay. Well, I think you've heard from some of us that anything that's essentially a blank check is a problem.
Okay.
So I think we're pretty close. I'm not sure if any more discussion tonight gets us closer, but we will discuss this again in two weeks. So you want to summarize what you'll probably be bringing back?
So if it'd be all right, I'd, I'm, I'm a little unclear still on E. Would, would E just need to be removed flat out? What?
We have three and a half ready to do that to E, is how I sort of read that.
I'm interested to hear what Liz, oh, sorry. What does the Mayor Protem think for spacing? What's your thoughts?
So I, I think 800 is kind of too low too. But I think 1,200 would be fine, maybe there. You know, how, how, you know, right now, we're, we're, we're really speculating and, and until, until we get the first development out there to, to take a stab at this, we won't know how this all is going to work or not work. So how, how easy or difficult will it be for us to tweak this as we're moving through this whole process in the coming months and years?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say that would be an easy process, but once things are set, I, we, we certainly can change it. But I think, once we realize it needs change, if, if you feel that there's too many apartments, it's too late to make that change, right? Yeah.
That's what I was going to say to that. You can't become more restrictive once things are in place. That's problematic from a, a lot of viewpoints.
Okay.
So I, this is my opinion, but it seems like if we make E go away, we're really just concentrating on the spacing.
I think if, if, if E went away, it'd be the spacing and it would be for B, do you want to require more mixed use along? So if, if the goal is to get mixed use and you're going to remove E completely, would you want to raise B's percentage up to require more mixed use along roads like McCrimmon? And really, I think if you look back at my map, the difference between 1,200 and 1,500 feet is, is very similar. So I, you know, either way, that, that goes, I think would be okay.
Well, once again, I'll say that's two full developments. So that's a 40% difference.
Sure.
Someone over here, but I don't see a blue thing. Uh, Councilmember Garamella? Well, even, but with the things, yeah.
So can we do a restriction of amount of apartment units as a development that they can do? So that at least we know a cap of it? To, instead of like a free flow, like, you know, we are just saying if it is like a 25 acres property, that guy can build 1,000 apartments right there.
Yeah, that, well, so there's, there's kind of two ways about it. First one is density per acre, but the second one is the use table already breaks out apartments 50 and below and apartments 50 and above. So we are above 50. So there, there is flexibility for that.
And that way, at least we do some, give a flexibility, but a cap of not more than so. You know, that, that would help us not have like, you know, a free flow of having big developers come and buy this land. And then because of the 1,500 spacing, they will try to concentrate the amount of units at one place and just grow like with a high density. So that's one. And then what if we just remove A and then put B in there? You know, like, we are kind of encouraging, like, suppose multifamily, just pure multifamily is not a use that you can have and you can mix it with vertical use there. I, I don't see any problem with that for personally, because the whole idea is that street facing is to be vibrant. Because, you know, Bainbridge is apartments the entire way. And the idea is to have retail in the down. So take that use out and just put mixed use, like vertical or mixed use, not multifamily.
Yeah. I, that's, that's, that's.
I mean, that would restrict, you know, like, because the whole idea is like, from where I see E is, okay, you have multi-mixed use vertical, then there's no spacing requirement. And then you're putting this 1,200. So it's for the staff, it's very hard to say, oh, you're purely multifamily, that's 1,200 and you're vertical used, so that's like, you know, 1,000, 800. You know, it's almost, it's a living nightmare for you guys to even take that kind of application or not. Because it will again come under. because it will again come under variance, because we're just throwing a number without even knowing what kind of use is going there.
This is true.
I think the general consensus was that we do want A and some kind of spacing, though.
No, what I'm saying is like, put the 1,200 with B. Take out A. What, A is just pure multifamily.
They both are.
Yeah, but you're giving, you're, you're getting, you know, a component of the retail along with it.
Yeah, that's what A and B do together. So, but I, I do like the point that you made about capping the number of units, because we've been sort of looking at the green blobs as just developers. But there is no real hard cap. We've talked about the idea of 300 units per each of these developments, but that's not a limit, correct? They could build as much as 1,000 in one of these green parcels if they wanted to by right if we passed as is?
They, they would have to work around the other requirements such as parking, trees, all that, but theoretically, yeah, if there was a large enough parcel, yes.
Okay, just as long as we're also aware of that. Do we have any legislative authority to put a cap on the number of units on a parcel for any reason for multifamily?
I think we, I think the town does. I think it could be a, like I said earlier, the use table has a distinction already between below 50 apartment, multifamily, and above 50. I think there is another, I think within the use table, we could put something just for this district that says, you know, only up to 300 units. Whatever number comes up. But I, I, yes, I think we could.
So I think that would be a good option, if staff could investigate that, what would be a fair balance to putting a cap on a maximum units per development for next time for our consideration as an option going forward?
But also, you know, I think, I, I would still say, because it's either R is kind of hard, like if you're having someone with a different use, then as Liz said, like, you know, what is a spacing limit? So it, like, down the corridor, it says, okay, this is 1,200. So this guy has a vertical use, so from here, what is a 1,200 again? So it's kind of, becomes almost impossible for them to come and they have to come back to us every time for variance, and it is, it's, I can, I can see this almost as a rezoning application that will be going on.
I, I, I don't. I think that everyone's going to be scrambling to buy these, and I think a lot of biomanufacturing is going to be competing with apartments, and I don't think they'll be able to compete with apartments unless we put limits on apartments. But that's just my opinion. I, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Garamella. Okay.
If I could ask one more question about this, I, just to be, I'm, I'm not sure what I need to bring back next time. I, I'd, I'd prefer we get some, a firmer kind of guidance on at least maybe a few of these items. I'm not su, I'd be happy to come back to as many meetings as we need to, but I'm just not sure what to bring back.
Can I ask if the council will be content? We've seen the 1,200 and we've had some pushback. If you were to come back with a 1,500, and we could change it back to 1,200 at the next meeting if we wish, but if we did that and made E go away, I think we're very close to having consensus. Because we had a little discussion on both of those things, and if those can be addressed, we can change them then. But if it shows as that, I think that would probably be acceptable to.
Okay.
This is what, who's here today.
Okay.
Any comment, comments from my fellow councilmembers on that?
So one more time, what was it?
Yep. That the 1,200 would become 1,500 and E goes away. And then.
And, and what would, so what is intent incentivizing the people who are using vertical mixed use?
They're required to have 50% on everything fronting the Collector Streets and McCrimmon. So we're less about incentives and we're more about executing our vision.
No, I mean, we are, we are going both ways, right? We did add 150 tree preservation, so that's not incentivizing them, it's incentivizing, like for us, for the trees, and which I'm perfectly fine with that. So, so I'm trying to see what kind of uses are we getting there? When we are just taking E away, what is, what options do they have to do to get a vibrant city around that area?
There are no further real incentives to do more, because this is acceptable to us.
Well, clearly, it's not acceptable to, Councilmember Garamella, that's why he keeps asking. He has, he has a problem with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for some, I, I'm totally okay, like, with this, the word. I know it is throwing everyone, is with no minimum distance required, and E is what is throwing everyone out, but I certainly like the mixed use. And how can I, you know, put that so that it is, it blends in well? And that I'm not able to find that middle ground there.
Okay. Councilmember Fender?
Well, I just wanted to mention, I mean, we're requiring mixed use. I mean, the, we're not incentivizing it because we're requiring it in B. So, I mean, we're requiring that 50% of that bottom floor be retail, or not, we keep saying retail, but it's not just retail. So, I mean, we could increase that 50%, so 100%. If, if, is that what?
I'm going to say, like, especially when Michelle said, like, the 50% could be part of their gym and other things. So in, in sense, for me, that's an apartment complex, which is having their amenities for the local people, but it is not giving for the, like, a place where people can go out and hang out, because that's only restricted to that particular set of apartments.
Well, you have the other 50%.
Yeah, to be clear, their amenities do not count towards that 50%. That's on their own 50%. The 50% will be for the town, essentially, will be open to everyone. Like the shared space requirement we have for apartment developments, they can't just have their pool, they also have some shared space for residents from everywhere. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
So Chris, do you have any idea, and this may not be a fair question, in Grace Park, ground floor is commercial? And you're right, we have to stop using the word retail, because we learned that retail is, is more, what's the word? Look, I just lost the word. It's not as broad as I used to think it was. But anyhow, so commercial on the first floor. In, in Grace Park, do you have any feel for what percentage of that is commercial? Is it all commercial? I mean, I know they have garages in the back, and so I'm not 100% sure.
I'm not sure either. I think most, everything that you see from Marshall Carpenter and Davis Drive is some kind of commercial. And I think the rear are garages and more of that residential-focused living space. And again, this would just be for buildings that are along those roads. So if a, if a park, if a complex has a building along the road and then a few in the rear, those wouldn't be required to provide that mixed use. It would just be the ones along our major roads that really going to have that more visible, visibility from traffic.
Okay, and I'll just kind of remind everybody that Grace Park does not have amenities. There is not a pool, you know, there's not a clubhouse, so, you know, we're talking about the fact that these apartment complexes are, are going to have these amenities. They, they may or may not. And so I think, you know, the, the, and, and I'm, you know, this may be okay for me, too, and for all of us, but the more, the more you require them, and the more expensive it becomes to develop it, then they're gonna, they're gonna look to, to save, and, you know, amenities may be what they save, or not. I don't know. I don't know, you know, that's not my business. So I don't, you know, I, I don't know if you can build apartment complexes without amenities these days.
Well, and, and I'll add, just, if you think about Broadstone Trailside up here along McCrimmon, their pool, their clubhouse, all those things are back off of McCrimmon. They have their residential buildings up front. So I, I do think there is some opportunity for some flexibility when they design their site. How much that costs, what are their trade-offs, hard to say.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Councilmember Rao, please.
I think what Councilmember Garamella is trying to say is that I, I do see them being similarly with Bs, you know, saying we're going to preserve 50% of the ground floor, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember, but I think if you eliminate E completely, then, because if you look at a lot of the, the developments, if you're going to have sort of like a downtown feel, a lot of the multifamily is on the upper floor, and the retail is on the bottom floor. So if you look at just Grace Park or Park West, or if you go anywhere, so if you completely eliminated E, would you be making it harder for developers to build that kind of a product? You know, maybe instead of having language, no minimum distance requirement, there's something in there that we can, you know, I, I don't know. I just, I think that's the issue at hand, is if you eliminate E completely, then are we holding our, are, are we basically saying that, are we, are we hurting our chances for other kinds of creative and innovative developments in the future? That's the concern that, I mean, I think that we're, so I don't know if there's something that staff can come back to us with, with concern, because I think everybody's, well, it seems like a lot of us have concerns about the no minimum distance. Anytime you put the language no minimum distance, it just, we envision lots of packed apartments together and nobody wants that. So.
Let me, what if I came back in it with, with three options for E? I think, I think the other ones are almost settled. Three would be, we could either remove completely, it could be a cap on the number of apartments allowed per development, or it could be some kind of spacing requirement. If I brought those three options back, would it be, make for a better discussion or a more focused discussion?
Yes.
That work?
I think probably, but we have a couple other people with their blue things up, so.
Okay.
Make notes, you can bring those three back, and we'll see what the council's desire is at that time. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So real quick, I was just going to answer Mayor Pro Tim's question about Grace Park, is that there are no amenities on that first floor, it's all commercial. They do have a gym, but it's a private gym, that 24-hour one. And their office is on the first floor, but it's along the side. That's it, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, please.
I, I think that's a good compromise, Chris, if you can bring back with options, because my, my whole reason is land here is super expensive. And if you get a one-story commercial, it, I'm worried that the future of it, how it goes. The reason I was, keep on saying vertical mixed use, at least, you know, that from the development point of view, it is okay, otherwise, just retail, like, is, like, that place is going almost like $450,000 to $500,000 an acre in those areas. And then to put a single-story retail, it will not work. That's my thought process, because A, we are restricting the number of apartments, then there is no people who will be coming there. And if you have restaurants in other places and next to all the office places, it will be a one-time use. And we have seen restaurants and color commercials struggle in the nighttime. Pretty much it's dead in those areas. That's, that's my worry.
Okay.
So I can only imagine a mixed-use vertical multifamily or office spaces or biopharma. Those are the three uses I can clearly see. I can't see, until unless someone is really, really passionate, that only place I can see it can flourish is next to the big competition center. Like, they can have like a foot hub or something, like, right, which has 5,000 people, kids going in and out, but if you go through the entire corridor, Baby Moon Cafe, those areas are also struggling. So it's only, even though daytime might be good, nights are pretty much empty.
Right. Okay. I'll, I have three more slides if you're ready for me to move to those.
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, what are they? The next, I think they're just all definitions also, and I'll just keep scrolling, it's at the very bottom of my, I'm going 12. Where is it? All right, so this is in the Transit-Oriented Development District, speaking of vertical mixed use. This clarified that a building in the TOD facing any kind of street would be required to have the 50% ground floor mixed use. So again, the thinking is the TOD, we will get more of those mixed uses, we want to require that against any street in the TOD. I'll just keep moving on. The next one is research laboratory. Again, just clarified some of the definitions that it, it's not meant as a manufacturing, but we, you know, the town will allow some accessory biomanufacturing, or some manufacturing which are not intended for the sale of the public, which are intended for research, study, developmental, or academic purposes. And the last one is biomanufacturing. There was a lot of discussion last meeting about, basically, you know, any, any odor, smoke, heat glare escaping from the manufacturing activity. This is defined by manufacturing to say that everything has to take place within a building, nothing shall escape that building. And again, that's to avoid some of the more industrial things we talked about last time. That, that is my presentation.
Okay, so does this last one you were just talking about, does that address the two public hearing comments? Are we at tonight, or not quite?
So not quite. I've actually talked to both these gentlemen on the phone. They are looking at expanding the definition of biomanufacturing to really utilize, they basically want it to be broadened. And I, I told both of them on the phone that I'm not an expert in biomanufacturing, but they provide some language, we would consider it. We have it here. I think it really is, depends on, the things I've told folks are, we want to, when you drive by, by these places, we don't want, we're not, or the, the town is not really looking for a traditional manufacturing facility. It needs to kind of resemble more of a traditional office. And like this definition, you shouldn't be able to tell necessarily that it's a manufacturing facility. I think as staff, we're willing to open up and look at some more of these uses, if, if that's what council wants us to do. Currently, we're going to maintain this proposed definition.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
So is there a way, Chris, that we can make the wording so it, it is more general or, I don't, I, right now, I'm drawing the blank as to what to say, but to, to make it so it's more general, so it would include some of the definitions that have recently been offered and more? Because, you know, over time, you know, there was, there was, there was a time where some of these terms didn't exist in our vocabulary. So, you know, over time, there'll be more criteria or definitions or uses that are going to come about. So is there a way to just make this broader? Because I don't think I have a problem with what.
Sure.
What has been suggested, suggested by these two gentlemen with their, with their public comments, but again, and to your point, as long as the outside of the building doesn't look like an industrial site.
Yeah.
That's what we're after here.
I definitely think we can. What, you know, in one of the emails we received, it says similar high-tech processes. Something like that probably needs to be a little more objective, but yeah, there's certainly language we can, we can present that'll broaden it to.
Because that might satisfy their, you know, needs and concerns and.
And honestly, I've talked to a lot of people and they start telling me about what they do, and I'm like, I don't even know what that is to know. So you're going to have to write us some kind of letter describing how, you know, how the property functions, what you actually do, what kind of, you know, all those things, so.
Yeah, I'd support broadening as long as it doesn't jeopardize health and safety of our residents or the employees there. So you guys can find it some best practices that's acceptable to the corporations and the developers to make sure that we're not limiting the people who can come and invest in our town and build our tax base, as been mentioned. Because as was mentioned, this is a very important area of town for us to make sure that we maximize the usage.
Okay, certainly.
Did any other councilmembers have any other thoughts about these amendments that are coming back to us in two weeks for final approval? Okay.
I'm going to say, we, we don't know if, like, once we get. I'm going to say, we, we don't know if, like, once we get this one where we land up again. So, we'll see then.
As was mentioned, you can't become more restrictive. So, I'd rather have the guardrails be tight and we can always relax them, rather than the other way around. But, Chris, you and your staff, great job getting us to this point. I know it's been quite a heavy lift and you're near the finish line.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we'll see you again in two weeks.
See you then. Bye.
Thank you very much. Now might be a good time for a break before we go into action items at 7:31. Why don't we reconvene at 7:42, please? Okay, we're coming back into order at this time. I'd like to take a moment to recognize our attorney Frank Gray for a moment.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I just wanted to reintroduce my law partner, Lori Jones. I think I've introduced her before, but a few things have happened in the intervening 15 months. If the creek don't rise, my wife and I are planning some trips later in the year. It might make me miss some meetings. I wanted to be sure you had capable backup. Lori has worked on a number of Morrisville things, usually in the background, but she is familiar with town matters. And she has been watching on Zoom for the past 12 months. So she knows each of you and asks me questions after each meeting. We have an abundance of Lories and we have to have Frank's Lori and Martha's Lori to make sure we don't mix them up. But I hope you will have a chance to say hello and introduce yourself to Lori Jones, Frank's Lori, in the future meetings. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, welcome. Thank you very much. We appreciate you getting up to speed on the many aspects of Morrisville.
Very nice to see people in person versus model laptops, for instance.
Yep, we agree with that completely. So, welcome. We're moving on to item 10, action items. There are six action items on tonight's agenda. An ordinance to extend the town of Morrisville corporate limits to include 1608 Wilson Road, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment for 1608 Wilson Road, a resolution approving the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan update, 2021 bond referendum, introduction of bond orders, a resolution approving the NC DOT Airport Boulevard Extension, Phase 1 Right-of-Way Acquisition and Utility Relocation Agreement, and a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Town of Cary for operation of the Morrisville Smart Shuttle. Kate Murdock, Planner 1, will facilitate the first two items. Ms. Murdock.
Yes. So this first item is for the annexation of 1608 Wilson Road. I don't have any updates for you at this point. One note to acknowledge on the ordinance, though. We are still waiting on the property owners to get their boundary survey recorded with the Register of Deeds. And so we're holding off on putting the map book and page number in the ordinance until that's done. That doesn't affect council's ability to approve the item. We'll just hold off on recording it with the state until that's finalized. But it's in process at this point.
Okay, and we're scheduled to take action on this tonight.
Yes.
Was there information from the petitioner about whether or not LDR would be acceptable to them?
Yes. So we have several email correspondences with them, with them acknowledging that they are okay with that. We also have them on the phone here tonight, if you needed rebel confirmation from them, related to the rezoning, which is the next item.
Okay, because that's the next item. Okay, sounds good. Does anyone have any questions about this first item, which is extending the boundaries? Okay, I think at our places, we have some ordinance languages for this. I entertain a motion on ordinance 2021-229-0.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-229-0 of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the extension of the town of Morrisville corporate limits to include property located at 1608 Wilson Road, north of its intersection with Flip Trail, annexation 2021-0001.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries 6-0 on the next item. As she noted, the petitioner would be okay with LDR. Staff has recommended, and all the briefings have had MDR up to this point. I'd ask council if they'd be willing to make it LDR, because all the other zoning in that area is LDR also. And they don't need it to be higher. And I think that wherever we can encourage more single-family development and not have the first domino fall in this area, I think that would be a positive. Councilmember Abadi, followed by Mayor Pertim Johnson.
It's my understanding that the petitioners intend to put one house on the property. Is that the same one?
Yes, that is correct. And again, we have them on the line. If you would like them to confirm that.
No, I'm, I'll take your word for it. Okay, then I don't, I don't frankly see the need for that to go LDR. I'm fine with MDR. I mean, everything around there on the land use plan is scheduled to be MDR. So, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to, you know, I'll change my mind if everyone wants LDR, but that's my opinion.
Mayor Pertim Johnson.
So, I don't, I never heard council ask for the applicant to change to LDR. And to be very clear and make a correction, everything around it is medium-density residential. It's not LDR. So, actually, immediately around it is medium-density, and then a little further away is high-density. So, you know, I thought the applicant, I'm fine with the applicant wanting medium-density residential for their one single-family home. I mean, that, that is consistent with surrounding property.
Okay. So maybe I wasn't clear. The land use plan is MDR around there, but the zoning of the properties around there is low-density.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. So, just want to be clear of that. Councilmember Garamella.
No, I'm in the same opinion like us. And this is one unit. I don't think we need to go more into details and go with what we have with MDR.
Okay. I would just circle back that when we did the land use plan, we indicated that just because the land use plan says MDR, that doesn't mean that we're going to allow the upzonings that are associated with that, and that we weren't necessarily giving that signal. So, this is just one example that as the first one to go from LDR to MDR, I am hopeful that we still have the ability to create an atmosphere where there'll be more single-family detached, rather than townhomes. And just because this one is a single-family detached, doesn't mean that the rest won't become something different, which is not my vision for that area of town. Okay. So that being said, I don't see anyone else wishing to weigh in on this one. Is there a motion on ordinance 2021-165-0?
So, after consideration of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board and the Comprehensive Plan's goals and designated future land use for the subject parcel, I find that the proposed rezoning is reasonable because the subject parcel has applied for annexation into the town of Morrisville, and this change in conditions requires a zoning map amendment. I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-165-0 approving a zoning map amendment for 1608 Wilson Road, located on Wilson Road, north of its intersection with Flip Trail to the Medium Density Residential Zoning District, Res 21-0001.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in opposition to that one. So that's, that carries 5-1.
Okay.
Thank you very much for all your help. Appreciate it. Erin L. Hudson, Strategic Performance Manager, will facilitate the next item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bear with me just a moment. I'm going to hide your screen so I can do a little bit of finagling. Have a little bit of a surprise for you. Okay. So roughly nine months of collaboration and hard work have brought us to this point this evening. Staff shared draft updates of plan language with you at the June 22 meeting. There were no additional changes proposed at that time. We have made a few minor editorial changes in consistency for, or in terminology for consistency and formatting. An updated draft was provided in your agenda packet as Attachment 1. Really quickly, I just want to tell you a couple of things that we have done, just to give you some perspective. And we started with a really, really big plan in 2018. We had a new mission, a new vision statement, four core values, six goals, 27 objectives, 32 initiatives, 29 outcome measures. Really, really big plan. It was a lot. So, October of last year, we started on this journey to revise and update our plan, to get it a little more current, make it a little more streamlined. So since that time, we have received input by way of over 300 survey responses from community members and staff. We had eight of our community youth tell us how they felt about the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan in artistic expression. We've spent over six and a half meeting hours with council and staff discussing this update, talking about how important it was to get the language right, so that we get this, this plan right for our organization and for our community. The result is that we've been able to reach our goals with an updated and streamlined plan, reflective of our community, council, and staff input. That plan is going to serve us as a guiding document for the next three years. Our mission, vision, core values, and six goals remain the same. We have streamlined and organized to 17 objectives, 17 initiatives, and 20 outcome measures. So I do have to just share very quickly my appreciation to staff, to town council, to the Morrisville community, to Town Manager Paige, to our senior management, for the unending support of the efforts of this strategic plan, for entrusting me to lead this and be part of this process. So now, I'm going to give you the reveal. Before you is your new 2021-2024 Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan. So, this is the start of the revitalized and updated version. It's a comprehensive plan document. We also have a one-pager that I'm going to show you in just a moment. The front page that you see here is a collage image that's reflective of our goals and of our community. We have also included a narrative of how our plan was developed and how we use that to complete our work and our update process. We have branded our plan and included that logo here in the bottom right with pagination all the way through. You see a singular page here featuring our mission, vision, and core values, giving those elements the prominence that they deserve. You also have a singular page for our goals that feature an associated graphic and color for each. So if you'll take note of those images, that theme is going to be carried throughout. Then we have individual goal pages. So with each of those, you'll see some realigned features where our objectives and initiatives are featured at the top, our outcome measures are featured at the bottom. You also see some superscript notes throughout that attach to a reference. And that is going to lead you to a document here towards the end that's going to give a little more information as to what those reference points were. And remember, I said to pay attention to those colors. They're also tied to this reference document, so that people can easily sort of flip back and forth and find what it is that they're looking for. So in this reference section is the full detail for the noted element, as well as any useful links in this right-hand column. This section can be updated as needed without having to amend our official plan document. And then we've also added a full glossary of terms that are featured throughout our plan and frequently used in government to better inform our readers and visitors. So, this is a pretty comprehensive, pretty lengthy document. That may not be the most useful for some people. They just may want something very quick and easy to look at. So we also created a one-page version. So, again, we have our logo and branding here. We have carried through that same color scheme, so people can easily sort of transfer back and forth and know what it is that they're looking at. We have the linear alignment of our objectives, initiatives, and outcome measures here in vertical organization. We give a little more definition here. So instead of having to go through to a reference point, your detail is included here. We've also got a little more explanation here in this blue column. So instead of having those separate pages, we've included our mission, vision, values, when our plan was adopted, the website link. We've also got how we use our plan here at the bottom left. Everything is available at a glance for readers to view and find all pertinent plan information. So I hope you're as pleased with this outcome as we are. Lots of hard work, really, really excited to, to get to this point. Happy to answer any questions.
I really love the one-pager. That's got a lot of info in there.
It's going to transfer well for printing.
I was going to say, more than a five-by-seven, I'm thinking.
No, no, it's going to be big.
That's wonderful. I think I could speak for everybody that it's been a long, lot of hard work, and we really appreciate you taking the lead on this and making it happen. Couple of years ago, we had this first strategic plan, and I think this will take us well into the future. So, really well done. Thank you. Thanks, staff. Thank my colleagues, all the resident input that we had. Does anyone else like to share any comments, or I see Councilmember Abadi really wanting to.
I just want to say that I think that this represents an amazing achievement and, you know, and a lot of professional growth for you. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Well, with that, thank you very much. I entertain a motion on 2021-142-0.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Great job, Erin.
Yeah. We have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries 6-0. Well done. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, and congratulations to you all as well.
Excellent. At this point, we'll move on to the next item. Jeanne Hooks, Director of Management Services, will facilitate our next item. Ms. Hooks.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am pinch-hitting for Nancy this evening. So let me pull up. You'll bear with me just a moment. It's the bond. Oh, there it is, right there. Gosh, every time I open it up, it keeps moving down the list. So what I'm going to be opening up for you is really a motion script that will help you. This, tonight is really a formality, our next step in the process for our, our bond referendum and getting that engaged legally in the system. So, so tonight, what we're going to ask council to do is that you introduce the three bond orders individually. And so you'll be asked to read each one of them aloud. A little redundant, but it's all a part of the formalities of reading, reading it into the record. And then you'll be asked to, for a motion and a second, and then a vote for each one of them. And we'll have, we're doing this because we have to record it in the documentation, and your town clerk is going to certify that on all three of those. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, Mayor, to call for a motion for the first reading that has to do with public safety.
First, does anyone have any questions about any of these three? It's important that we keep moving forward on this timeline.
Okay. So the person making the motion would be the person asked to read and start with "Be it ordained."
Okay. Who would like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
Be it ordered, right?
Correct. Okay.
Be it ordered by the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville, North Carolina. That pursuant to the Local Government Bond Act as amended, the Town of Morrisville, North Carolina is hereby authorized to contract a debt, in addition to any and all other debt which said town may now or hereafter have power and authority to contract, and in evidence thereof, to issue public safety improvement bonds in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $8 million, for the purpose of providing funds, together with any other available funds, for acquiring, constructing, and equipping various law enforcement and firefighting facilities and improvements for said town, including, without limitation, the acquisition of land and rights of way and the furnishing of incidental facilities and equipment. Two, that taxes shall be levied in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and the interest on said bonds. Three, that a sworn statement of debt of said town has been filed with the town clerk and is open to public inspection. and is open to public inspection. Four, that this order shall take effect when approved by the voters of said town at a referendum as provided in said act. I hereby make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-274-0, adopting the order authorizing $8 million public safety improvement bonds.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously 6-0. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion on 2021-274-0. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rabadi.
Be it ordered by the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville, North Carolina. One, that pursuant to the Local Government Bond Act as amended, the Town of Morrisville, North Carolina is hereby authorized to contract a debt in addition to any and all other debt which said town may now or hereafter have power and authority to contract and in evidence thereof to issue streets, sidewalks, and connectivity improvement bonds in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $11,700,000 for the purpose of providing funds, together with any other available funds, for acquiring, constructing, and equipping various law enforcement and firefighting facilities and improvements for said town, including, without limitation, the acquisition of land and rights of way and the furnishing of incidental facilities and equipment. Two, that taxes shall be levied in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and the interest on said bonds. Three, that a sworn statement of debt of said town has been filed with the town clerk and is open to public inspection. Four, that this order shall take effect when approved by the voters of said town at a referendum as provided in said act. I hereby make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-274-0, adopting the order authorizing $11,700,000 streets, sidewalks, and connectivity improvement bonds.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Just checking on something real quick.
Yes, they're all the same number. It's all in one document. They just have to be read three separate individual times.
So that's what I'm looking at. Is this the streets one or is this the firefighter one?
No, we just did streets.
But it mentions firefighters in it, so I'm trying to.
So if if the person who made the motion could just acknowledge that it is the streets bond, I just noticed that she has this in the same verbiage. So if you'll just acknowledge that the street bonds, it is correct in the actual document, not in the script.
Oh, okay.
If you'll just acknowledge that it is streets, I will make sure that's removed.
It is streets, sidewalks, and connectivity.
And that the second, the person that seconds also acknowledges.
Yeah, I acknowledge.
Thank you.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 6-0 as amended.
Thank you. Third and final one.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville, North Carolina. One, that pursuant to the Local Government Bond Act as amended, the Town of Morrisville, North Carolina is hereby authorized to contract a debt in addition to any and all other debt which said town may now or hereafter have power and authority to contract and in evidence thereof to issue parks, recreation, and amenity improvement bonds in aggregate principal amount not exceeding $17,300,000 for the purpose of providing funds, together with any other available funds, for acquiring, constructing, and equipping facilities and improvements for said town, including, without limitation, the acquisition of land and rights of way and the furnishing of incidental facilities and equipment. Two, that taxes shall be levied in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and the interest on said bonds. Three, that a sworn statement of debt of said town has been filed with the town clerk and is open to public inspection. Four, that this order shall take effect when approved by the voters of said town at a referendum as provided in said act. I thereby make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-274-0, adopting the order authorizing $17,300,000 park, recreation, and amenity improvement bonds.
Who was the second? Councilmember Garamella again. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 6-0 as well. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Just want to remind council that we will have at your next meeting on August 10th is when we will have your public hearing and your next formality and adopting and taking action towards this. So this will be potentially one of the final formal steps before we go into full blast bond referendum outreach for our second pass, okay? Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. We will move on to our next item. Ben Howell, Long Range Planning Manager, will facilitate the final two items, actually.
Good evening. So this first item before you is a request for approval of an NC DOT agreement, an agreement with NC DOT for the Airport Boulevard Extension Phase One project. And specifically, this is the right-of-way agreement. Just some quick background. This project, as you may remember, was identified in the 2019 Conference of Transportation Plan as two phases. Phase one is what we've been working on, which is Garden Square Lane to Church Street. And phase two would be Church Street to NC 54 and would include a grade separation over the railroad and NC 54. Phase one engineering design is currently underway. That was funded by the Town Council in the FY '20 budget. And it's been managed, that project's been managed by NC DOT. So a status update on phase one. The engineering design work began in the fall of 2019, and then it was delayed in late 2019, early 2020 due to NC DOT funding issues. Work was restarted in the fall of 2020. During the environmental review work, they determined that they needed to also study a phase two preliminary alignments in order to receive the environmental permits. So they began doing that. A public meeting was held in this past spring where they reviewed the one alternative option for our phase one and two alignment options for phase two. Just note, though, that the final alignment for phase two will not be identified until the phase two engineering design is funded and that we do not know when that may occur. So again, this is focused on phase one. Just a reminder what that phase one alignment is. Essentially connecting the section of Airport Boulevard near Garden Square Lane west of Town Hall Drive, across Town Hall Drive, and over to Church Street. Again, it would be a four-lane median divided roadway. So we, the town received Campo LAPP funding for phase one right-of-way acquisition and construction earlier this year. We applied for it last fall and received it earlier this year with a funding split of 60% of LAPP or federal funding and 40% local match by the town. We have worked with NC DOT, and they have agreed to continue managing the project through the right-of-way acquisition phase as well as the construction phase. The total cost for these next two phases is just over $7 million with town funding of a little over $2.8 million and LAPP funding of a little over $4.2 million. And as a reminder, this project has been identified as a potential bond referendum project in the information that's been put out about the bond referendum. So now we are to the point where we have already, NC DOT is getting close to being ready to start right-of-way acquisition. And in order to do so, we have to execute a municipal agreement with them for that. Upon execution, because they are managing the project, the town will immediately contribute our local match to NC DOT, and then they will request reimbursement for the remaining LAPP cost of the project. The estimated right-of-way acquisition cost for this phase is $600,000, which town funding would be approximately $240,000. LAPP funding is $360,000. And again, you'll also find with your materials that a capital project ordinance will be needed as well as approving the agreement in order to allocate funding. And the staff is going to be investigating the option to reimburse the general fund for this work from bond, from future bond proceeds if the bond is approved. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions. And again, asking for approval of the agreement and the capital project budget, capital project budget ordinance amendment tonight.
I recognize Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Benjamin, my understanding was the right-of-way was allocated, you know, before. So why are we spending 600, like, because my whole thing was the right-of-way was given to us, right?
Yes. So a majority of the right-of-way is dedicated, is existing. This $600,000 phase would purchase a few, there's some easements that would be needed, primarily construction easements. And then there is one parcel at Church Street that would need to be purchased as part of this acquisition phase in order to fully connect the roadway project to Church Street. And so that is what, that's the right-of-way acquisition that will be occurring.
Okay. And then the other question where I'll certainly get questions asked, you know, we're putting it as part of bond, and that's phase one, and we don't have a timeline on phase two. And this whole buildup is towards phase two when you get the flyover and this one. How would I answer to a resident who basically comes and says, this is only phase one? What do I get out of it when phase two, we don't have a timeline for it?
Right. So I think there's a, there are benefits to phase one as a standalone project. One is that it provides a connection between Church Street, Town Hall Drive, and the existing section of Airport Boulevard that gets you to Davis Drive. So it would create yet a third east-west connector in town from Church Street out to Davis Drive. With that said, phase two obviously is also going to be very important, but it is outside of the town's capability to fund at this time. And so we have been working, I've been working closely with Campo to try and get phase two included in the, or submitted to NC DOT as part of the strategic prioritization process that's currently ongoing to, for the next state transportation improvement program, which is the 10-year funding program. We will begin finding out results of that work in the next, over the next two to three months. And we hope to see that Airport Boulevard has been funded in that. However, the phase one work will be important to help get that phase two funded. Because frankly, without phase one, phase two probably would never be funded. So this work helps. And the extra, additional environmental work that we had to do for phase one, where we had to look at a couple of alignment options for phase two, that also will help us when phase two is funded because that's a little bit less work that may need to be done for phase two.
So I hear you, but if I had to concisely tell, so I may need it not now, but later. But that's a question that I will get hammered every time, you know, the same phase one and phase two. That would be.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, the short of it is, phase one, well, it sets us up to get funding for phase two much easier than if we were trying to get funding for phase two without phase one.
Yeah. Only caveat is we don't have a timeline.
Yeah.
Thank you. Having talking points will be important about all our bond issues. So I hear you.
This one, hold it.
Yep, understood. Councilmember Rabadi, followed by myself, please.
Satish got my question. Thank you.
Okay. And in the spirit of what Mr. Howell said about building upon the work being done, the flyover for phase two is really important for progressing NC 54 widening. That's our long-term goal. And this, just like phase one makes phase two possible, phase two will make NC 54 widening possible as well. So that's more of a comment, less of a question. Councilmember Rao, followed by Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
No, I mean, I think Councilmember Garamella brought up the point I was going to make, but I want to follow up on that point. I mean, I think the more we can get timelines, the better so we can communicate to the public when we see these roads being completed. I think it's also very important, we've had a lot of projects over the years. And, you know, I think it's important for our staff and our communications department to be able to communicate the actual dollar amount of investments that our council and previous council have made in our transportation network. Because I think it often gets forgotten when you add up Morrisville Carpenter Road, recruitment extension, all of these different things, right? I know it's there somewhere, but I just want to share that thought with the council and with the public listening tonight. Because, you know, I would like us, I know we're going to go to Campo and Mayor Protam and Mayor said on Campo, but I still don't think, maybe it's biased, but as much money as we've invested on state roads, I just feel like we should be, there should be legislation that is really accelerating other projects for towns like us that are putting bonds and our taxpayers are funding these roads. So, you know, I don't know what we can do, continue to beat the pavement after COVID. Let's get out to the General Assembly and talk to people, talk to Secretary Boyett. I want to bring them out here and show them the progress we've made, you know? Because I think a picture's worth a thousand words. So anyway, it's just, just big picture thinking, but I think we can do a lot of that.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Johnson.
So just to piggyback off of that for a minute, I would agree. Our residents have gone above and beyond and paid more than their fair share to improve our state roads when, with their local tax money here in the Town of Morrisville, when they pay state taxes that are supposed to be taking care of these roads. So I just want to echo that. We've gone far and above. This design, though, Ben, is it complete, what we're looking at? Are we still in, are we still working through the, to get to the final design?
Yeah, the design is right around 25% at this point.
Okay.
So there's still some additional work that'll be occurring for, on the design. I think on our current schedule, they have estimated to have design complete by early next year. They generally start right-of-way acquisition before the complete, complete design. So, but we, while we need to have the, go on and get the agreement in place now, that's more due to timelines from DOT and from Campo in order to ensure that we'll be ready to start spending our LAPP funds when they're, they become available after October 1. The actual right-of-way acquisition probably will not start until after October, November of this year.
Okay, okay. And the reason I ask that is because, you know, there are several residents that are very affected by this road extension and had some concerns that I want to make sure that we are still addressing, that, you know, we're making, as, being good advocates for our citizens when, when we're going through the whole design process.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, there was a lot of engagement in those meetings. So will this end up being a state road or a town road?
It will be a state road.
Okay, so we'll have some input, but not decision-making authority onto its final, how it looks?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be clear for everyone involved that that's going to be the case. Okay. Any other questions on this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I do have one more question.
Yes, please.
When you say that staff is investigating the option to reimburse the general fund from future bond proceeds, does that mean that we might not be able to do it? Because I have a concern about that.
I'm going to turn it over to Jeanne for that.
So you should be able to, and that will be incorporated. Unfortunately, Ben's had to get his item out before I could get the answer to the question. But I spoke with our bond attorneys, and they're going to roll in, intent to reimburse into your next action item on August 10th with your public hearing. It'll just be a blanket for anything that is eligible. And in this case, it would be designed right-of-way land acquisition and construction costs that routinely is eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. At this time, is there a motion on Resolution 2021-280-0?
Do you need two motions, Ben, for? Do you need two motions, Ben, for the resolution and the capital?
Okay, one will work.
Okay, can I just say, motion to approve? Do you want me to read it out?
You can never just say, motion to approve.
Well, we do.
Unless it's the agenda.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-280 of the Mooresville Town Council, approving a municipal agreement with NC DOT for right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation for the Airport Boulevard Extension Phase One project, and Capital Project Ordinance 2021-280 of the Mooresville Town Council, mending the NC 54 corridor congestion mitigation, Capital Project Ordinance 2019-100-B.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fender, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 6-0. Thank you very much. You also have the next item, sir.
Yes, I do. All right, this next item is long-awaited as well. It's, I'll be providing you an update on the Mooresville Smart Shuttle service, and then at the end, also requesting that you approve the agreement with Towne-Carry to allow operation of the Smart Shuttle service. So quick overview for those that may not be aware, the Smart Shuttle service will be providing an on-demand service to 15 nodes in town. It'll be based with, riders will utilize a mobile app in order to request a ride, both a pickup and a drop-off at one of the 15 nodes, and the app will, similar to Uber and Lyft, be able to allow riders to track the shuttle in real-time, both to their, to their pickup spot, and then during their ride to their destination. And the service is very flexible and can be expanded to additional nodes in future years. Currently, service planning, capital and infrastructure work is ongoing. We've been meeting weekly with our technology vendor, Via Mobility, who's developing the mobile application and online platform. We have been working on node improvements in construction. We've been beginning working on marketing of the new service. Go Carry is working on driver recruitment, and we've also been conducting community outreach on how to engage youth service in the mobile application. Here is, on your screen here is just an updated node map, very similar to what you've seen in the past, just, we have updated it with a new look and added a legend that shows the actual locations of where the shuttle will stop. Again, we do have multiple nodes, and we do have several node locations that'll have amenities. As you can see on your screen here, we do have three nodes that'll have shelter, a shelter, trash, and recycling, and then we also have four other nodes that'll have, at a minimum, bench, trash, and recycling amenities. Also, do want to note that the Ridgemont-Savannah neighborhood will also include a bike rack. The Park West Village will actually be split into two nodes. We will consider it one, but the app will actually be able to direct folks to the node that is closest to where they are in Park West Village, and one of those locations, which is a shared stop with a Go Triangle bus route, that's the one that will have a shelter that Go Triangle will be installing this summer. And then, of course, Wake Tech is also a Go Triangle maintained bus stop that already has an existing shelter there. Our other node locations do not have any amenities at this time, but they may be added in the future. You'll see them on the screen there, Carrington Mill Boulevard and Perimeter Park, in the Providence Place subdivision, at McCrimmon Corners by the Senior Center, on Town Hall Drive near the community center at the library, on Mooresville Parkway near Golden Horseshoe Circle, also near the park and Mooresville Elementary. We'll also have a node located at HSNC, as well as at BAPS, and all the nodes will have identifying signage, and they, at a minimum, will have concrete pads meeting ADA requirements to allow for getting on and off the bus safely, on and off the shuttle safely. As far as node construction timing, the construction on four nodes with amenities by a contractor for the town began in mid-June and will be completed by the end of this month. We're actually hoping it'll be completed hopefully next week, and that's the Ridgemont-Savannah, Breckenridge, Kits Creek, and Mooresville Carpenter Road nodes. The engineering department has been overseeing that construction. The HOAs were contacted prior to the start of that construction. Other node construction will begin in July. That's primarily at four additional nodes that'll, that need to have a concrete pad installed. That will be completed by Public Works crews in-house. And all the nodes, except for those that I mentioned that are shared by Go Triangle or Go Carry, will be maintained by Mooresville. The Via Technology that underpins the service is a mobile application and a website, and you can see on your screen some screenshots of what that mobile application may look like. It'll probably be tweaked just a little bit, but that gives you an idea of the, what the interface will look like. And then we will have two dedicated Smart Shuttle vehicles that'll be operated by Go Carry. They are 16-passenger ADA compliant vehicles. They will have Smart Shuttle wrapping via, Smart Shuttle branding via vinyl wraps, and then we'll also have large-scale magnets available if, for some reason, one or both of our branded vehicles are unavailable for use. And it does say addition of All America City Designations being explored. We are actually getting that put onto the shuttles as well, so that All America City branding will be included. Here you have the, what the branding will look like, what we've worked up. While it's not shown on these images, the All America City branding will be here and here, essentially opposite, and to balance the, the picture of the cell phone and the Via branding here. And then on the rear of the shuttle, we will have it approximately around here, near the A reminder of the operation schedule, it will run seven days a week, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., with the second shuttle operating during morning and afternoon peak hours. And then on Saturday, it'll run from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and on Sunday, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Currently, we have identified 10 holidays that the shuttle will not operate on. We will continue to monitor that, and we can revise that holiday list each year prior to beginning of the next year of service. As far as riding the Smart Shuttle, what the experience will look like, riders will utilize an app, the app, or they'll be able to utilize a desktop website to request a ride from one node to another. They will not have to be located directly at the node to request a ride, but they will, on their app, have to place a pin at the node that they want to be picked up at. When they place that pin at that node, the app, if they're close enough, the app will give them walking directions to that node, and it will also give, give them at that time, once they accept the ride, they'll be able to track the shuttle in real-time to see when it will arrive at that node. So for example, if they request a ride from, say, Kits Creek to Perimeter Park, the app will tell them, you, you know, here, the shuttle can be there in 20 minutes, and your ride will take approximately 15 minutes, they will be able to track the shuttle for that 20 minutes, so they'll be able to place the request, say, from their home, and know the shuttle's five minutes away, I need to walk out to the node and be prepared to get onto the shuttle at that time. Again, the wait time after a ride is requested will vary based on traffic and other ride requests. We expect the average wait time to be with, around 15 to 30 minutes, but it certainly could be upwards of closer to 60 minutes at certain times of day. Again, that's one of those things we will check and, and keep an eye on. If we do see long wait times, the best way to address that would be to increase time of the second shuttle, so we'll be keeping an eye on that. We will have good metric, good reporting capabilities through the Via application, and we'll be able to come back to council, you know, over time, and let you know how the service is operating, and if it looks like we need to, you know, increase the time that the second shuttle is on the road. So I think I've covered pretty much everything on this screen. The other big, important thing to remember with this service is that the technology, it really aims to make the shuttle as efficient as possible, and there is no guarantee that you will be riding the shuttle alone. So the shuttle will route, the app will route the shuttle in such a way where if there are other pickup or drop-off requests along the route that the shuttle needs to take to get from your pickup to your drop-off, they will pick up and drop off those on the request at the same time. So it's sort of a mix between a truly on-demand service and a little bit of a fixed route We, as I said, we've been working with Communications Department on coordinating and implementation of the marketing and outreach plan and various materials. As you, you see a couple examples there on the screen, and I did want to just let y'all know, for those that may not have been aware, so far, staff have attended Spring Fest, Juneteenth, and the July 3 event to hand out materials. We've been using our Squishy buses, that seem to be really popular. Evidently, we ordered a lot more than we thought we needed, and so we still have some available, but, so we're continuing to use those. And then for the July 3 event, we actually ordered some new magnets that you'll see there. I believe some of you may have stopped by the booth and picked up one or two, and those magnets will be able to be, as well as the Squishy buses, will be able to continue to be used even once the service begins. Just a quick overview of how we'll handle customer information complaints. We will, we are going to be working with the Regional Transit Call Center, and they will be the primary point of customer information complaints, and the call center will be able to provide some basic information about our service, and then also be able to forward specific questions or, or requests to either Go Carry or to Mooresville staff, depending on what the question is. And then Go Carry, you know, so for example, questions about vehicle arrival times, other immediate operational service concerns would go to Go Carry, who has dispatchers on, on staff, and that would be working all the times that the shuttle is running, whereas for Mooresville, any node-related questions, general requests, service and technology platform questions would come to us. As far as problem resolution, of course, Mooresville and Go Carry will work together. We'll coordinate to contact customers and work to resolve complaints from customers within 48 hours. If we cannot resolve a complaint within 48 hours, we will follow up within one week of the original complaint for additional follow-up, if that complaint cannot be resolved in that 48-hour timeline. Overview of the different agreements associated with the Smart Shuttle. We have several agreements that are with Go Triangle and Campo. We have a capital funding agreement that covers infrastructure, technology, acquisition, and marketing, and then we have an operating funding agreement for operation. These agreements are between Mooresville, Campo, and Go Triangle, and they govern the reporting requirements and reimbursement that we are receiving from Wake Transit. Then we also have a Smart Shuttle operating agreement between Mooresville, Go Carry, and MV Transportation. MV Transportation is a Go Carry operations contractor. This agreement that you're looking at tonight governs operation of the service by Go Carry and MV, and includes roles and responsibilities for each party. And as a reminder, the budgeted FY '22 annual cost for the service is $605,000, with 50% of that being reimbursed from Wake Transit. A quick overview of the roles and responsibilities from the operating agreement. Mooresville, of course, we're covering service funding, the Smart Shuttle nodes, the technology vendor contract. We will be responsible for Wake Transit National Transit database reporting requirements, marketing of Smart Shuttle, and the vehicle-specific branding. Carry will be responsible for assisting us with service boundary, node locations, and operating schedule coordination, as well as overseeing MV. And then MV Transportation will be responsible for the actual operation of Smart Shuttle, service of maintaining vehicles, providing data to meet the reporting requirements, and then dispatching service for rides requested over the phone. Just a quick review of monitoring and reporting. So we will receive weekly and monthly reports from Go Carry and the Via Dashboard. That'll include ridership, origin, destination information, use of dispatchers, complaints, and other concerns. And again, customer complaints should be resolved within 48 hours. And again, we will have the ability to adjust the service based on the reported data over time if we see definitive trends that show adjustment is needed. We will also be responsible for submitting quarterly reports and reimbursement requests to Wake Transit, and annual reports to the National Transit database. And I just provided an example screenshot here from what a, some of the reporting that the Via Dashboard can provide, and some of the graphics that they can provide. And finishing up, just with the current status, again, our anticipated start date is late summer, early fall this year. We do have some issues impacting the start date. One is the driver shortage. Go Carry has been experiencing a significant driver shortage. They are making a lot of headway on addressing that driver shortage. They've been implementing a plan using best practices to address it, and are on their way to getting more drivers back on staff. If you may, you may or may not have seen, they actually had to, Go Carry had to reduce their own service earlier, over the last couple months because of the driver shortage, but they are now looking at being able to get back to their full, normal service schedule soon, because they've been, had some success with hiring new drivers. Again, driver shortage is a national problem, it's affecting all transit agencies. About a month ago, Go Carry, Go Raleigh, and Go Triangle, and I think Go Durham may have been involved as well, all held a joint hiring fair up at the Go Triangle Regional Transit Center, and that, it sounds like, was, had some success, so. Another issue is node construction. We did begin constructing some nodes in June, we still have some more to construct, but we do have those now. We have all the permits needed for the remaining node construction, so we're working on getting that scheduled, and are hoping that those will, that construction will be completed towards the end of this month or early August. And then we're also working with several property owners for access agreements for, we have a couple locations where we have nodes on private property, and others where the shuttle will be utilizing private properties, we're working through those property owners to finalize those agreements, and that is underway. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender, then Garamella, please.
I have two questions. The first is, what's behind the decision to not have benches and other amenities in Kits Creek and Breckenridge? Those are huge developments, I would think that a large percent of the ridership would come from there.
Both Kits Creek and Breckenridge will have benches. They will not have shelters.
And, wow.
And that was really based on, when we were initially looking at it, it was, we did not want to put out a lot of shelters at the beginning, because we're not sure, this is a new service, and we want to see what the ridership is going to truly be like. We don't truly know at this point, and so we wanted to provide some amenities, but we also wanted to be cognizant of the, the cost, and try and keep that capital cost down to some extent, and also realizing that, you know, it, the more amenities we put out, generally, it does take a little bit longer for some of that to happen. So we're, we were trying to do, you know, small steps, we wanted to at least get one shelter. We were hoping to be able to get two shelters out, but that did not work out, so we're, but we are getting the one shelter, and we're providing bike, benches, and where possible, bike racks.
Is that a solar panel on the top of that shelter?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
The other question that I had was the, the driver shortage and the driver situation overall. As that goes forward, are there going to be drivers hired specifically for the Mooresville routes? Or, my concern is that if Carry is managing the service and they have routes that they have to, you know, that they have to service in addition to our routes, that if a Carry driver routes, that if a CARRY driver quits, will they be just pulling a Mooresville driver? Or how's that going to work?
So there will not be, the drivers that are being hired, none will be dedicated to a specific service. It's really treated as a pool of drivers. And there's a lot of intricacies, some of which I don't know that we even are fully aware of with that. I mean, part of the issue, part of the, not really issue, but MV Transportation is unionized, and so there's some union rules associated with things. But I will tell you that GoCarry, in addition to their service, in addition to our service, they will also be operating the Apex, a new Apex service starting in the spring. And they are currently operating a GoTriangle service as well. So they have said, and they've shown with the GoTriangle service, that, you know, they're, one of their primary efforts is always going to be to try and maintain the service they're contracted for because they are receiving funding for that. However, you know, we do have things in our agreement where if something were to come up like this again, where it's such a driver shortage that there has to be a reduction of service across the board, they, there's time built in where they have to come and talk to us, and we work together on figuring out how to best address that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
I have four questions. First, I'm assuming the node for Kits Creek will be close to the clubhouse?
Yes. It's, the concrete pad for that node is actually already constructed. It is on Grand Liberty Way. I believe it's the name of the road. Direct, right next to the, between the, I believe it's between the pavilion and the playground.
Okay. And I can see not having a shelter in that location. We have the pavilion and the clubhouse right there, so that would be fine. My next question, to go along with that, is why doesn't Providence Place have any amenities? Because that, it seems like all the other substantial neighborhoods do have something except them.
Yeah. And part of that is just due to the location of where we have put the node. The node for Providence Place is located on that wide section of sidewalk across from their clubhouse where the Greenway comes out or leads back towards 540. And so, again, it was a matter of, we had to be careful about where we chose to actually do construction because of the cost, and we're trying to, again, start small. Certainly, we will be reviewing ridership data, and we do have funding in our funding plan that we worked and have submitted as part of the budget process, looking long range. We have included funding moving out each year for additional node construction.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. And then my third question is, which department within the town is going to handle the problem resolution?
Currently, the plan is for the Planning Department to continue managing the service, including problem resolution.
Are you going to need to hire anyone new?
That we do not know yet.
There's not going to be that many problems.
Yeah. Again, that's, some we'll continue to monitor and will certainly bring up to administration of budget time if it looks like that is going to need to be a need.
It just seems from that slide that you presented with all the roles that we're taking on additional tasks, and that has to be done by somebody.
Yeah. A lot of our tasks, though, is more high-level project management. So, I mean, it is, it certainly is additional work, but at the same time, it's, it's things that are, there will be busy times and non-busy times. So we feel that at this point, we do have the staff that we can handle those additional duties.
Okay. Well, and then along with that, who's doing the branding and marketing? Have you guys contracted that out? Or are you doing it in-house?
We're doing a lot of the, a lot of that work in-house. The Communications Department has been a huge help with helping us develop the communications and marketing plan and helping us create materials. And then I do have to throw a shout out to Caleb, our Planner One, Transportation and Land Use, or Transportation-focused Planner One. He has been doing a lot of work with developing a lot of our branding materials, developing designs for the proposed node signs. He developed the branding that you saw with the buses. And so he's really has been, has done a tremendous job learning a lot of graphic design for us, and we've been very happy and very thankful that we have him onboard.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive. And then lastly, I just want to say I'm excited to see this come into fruition. It's cool.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thanks, Benjamin. Excellent presentation. And I also liked the M, which is like, kind of a code that, which has, I really like that. To answer Ann's comment, they are getting a bench which is customized Breckenridge bench, so, and also bike rack, I think Mark and I, that has already been installed. I see trash and recycle. Are there two bins which are going in or just one?
They are, it'll be a separate trash and recycling bin, very similar to what we've been using around a lot of our parks.
Okay. And then my question is, is there Wi-Fi in the bus?
The shuttles that we will be using, I do not believe will have Wi-Fi at this time.
Okay. And then one thing would be good is that sign with the code, the barcode. If we can have it in all the stops somehow, that would be good if people are just walking, at least they, it's kind of.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that is our plan. Every node location will have a sign that'll have that QR code on it.
Okay. And the one thing I did not like was the 60-minute-long wait or approximately 30 minutes. Mooresville is only eight square miles. If a person has to wait 60 minutes, it kind of defeats the purpose of the Smart Shuttle. And also wanted to see what kind of algorithms will be used. For example, like the shuttle is at Town Hall Drive, and I from Breckenridge will say, okay, pick me up. And then they find someone who is in Richmond. So how is the routing done? Like, will it then, okay, Richmond is on the way. Should I go like one mile and pick up? And so, by the way, Osawanna is also there. So how does it go? Is it like three-four, like first in, first out?
I.
Or then the other question is, like, someone would say, from Breckenridge, go to Kits Creek, and then in the middle, there is someone else who had already asked for in Park West.
Yeah.
So how is the routing done?
That I cannot really answer directly. We have not gotten into that level of detail with VIA about exactly how their algorithm routes the buses. What I can say is that they do pride themselves on efficient routing. I don't know that I can guarantee that it'll always be first in, first out, but I believe that's probably the general rule. And again, it's, you know, hopefully we don't see 60-minute wait times, but we also want to be honest and be upfront that, you know, as we all know, Mooresville does have traffic congestion, and it's very light, you know, it may be that at certain times of the day, if the bus gets stuck in traffic, it may take it, you know, 45, 60 minutes to get to a pickup location. Again, that's all things that we'll have to continue to monitor, and we'll be able to, we'll be able to keep track of what the wait times are and report those back to council and discuss with council, you know, as each budget year comes up, if, you know, if we need to look at increasing the Smart Shuttle service.
And is there provision for any special events? We increase the number of ridership, like not two buses, three buses. I can give you an example for the July 3, you know, event. I would love, instead of getting my car, sit on it and just come here. And so that way, you're taking a lot of the cars out. Parking is not an issue. And if we can program all our events with adding those kind of features, it basically is a win-win.
We, we did discuss that with GoCarry. The problem with doing that is that it adds a lot of, the way the service is designed, it's very, this service is very difficult to do that with because it is, it's meant to be an app-based on-demand service. And so providing additional shuttles or targeting shuttles to only serve a large event then takes them away from the rest of the town. And it also is very difficult to do from, you know, setting up the app. So we, we've discussed trying to do that. It's just, it's going to be very difficult. And then also from the GoCarry side, they're, they have a difficult, they have a lot of difficulty in scheduling drivers for special events like that and the way our agreement is set up.
Pretty much designated, like, you know, Spring Fest or Christmas time, you know, you have those certain four days that you really use it for. But that would be good to incorporate. And, and, yeah, that I strongly feel that would be good.
That's certainly something we can continue to look at, but it, like I said, when we've previously brought it up with both the technology vendor and GoCarry, there were a lot of concerns about how that could work and the cost and getting drivers and everything. So, but we'll, we'll continue to monitor that. And again, the biggest thing to remember with this service is we have built it purposefully to be flexible. So we will, this agreement, you'll, if you look at the agreement, you'll see it is technically a fiscal year agreement. So every year, we'll have, we'll have to go into a new agreement with GoCarry, but that also means that every year, we have the opportunity as Mooresville to decide if we want to add shuttles, if we want to add time, if we want to change the service. So we, it's built to be extremely flexible. Really, we're looking for this first, you know, first year to really look, to put it out there, see, see what the demand truly is, see what the data shows where people, you know, want to get on and off the bus, and then on and off the shuttle, and then we'll be able to really evaluate that moving forward. And if we need to start making tweaks, we certainly can look at doing that.
And my last question is, does 10 holidays, sorry, go ahead, Mr.
I was just going to add to some of your questions about the special events because as Ben has indicated, we've looked into that a little bit, had some discussions with Town of Cary, had some discussions with Jerry Allen as well. I think one of the larger concerns on our end was that we're looking at 16 passenger vehicle buses, and some of these events are very large events. And we didn't want, the shuttle, we didn't want the shuttle, you know, one or two of them, and even if we were to add a third, it could get overrun very, very quickly. And you could have a lot of people depending on shuttle service that really could only accommodate a small number of people, particularly when you're looking at these large events, you know, Fourth of July event that could have thousands of people. So that was another reason that we kind of backed off of using the shuttle for some of those larger events.
That makes sense, yeah. And the last, the holidays, right? Like, we have 10 holidays. If right off the back, we are, you know, I understand Christmas, Thanksgiving, those are, but July 4th, if we can open one or two holidays and see how the traffic is during those vacation times that people can, I really want to see how people use it over the vacation, you know, going, meeting people, and even kids going from one to other neighborhoods. So that would be good because if you're taking all the holidays out, then we don't know how the traffic on a weekend is, or a regular holiday would be.
And we'll be able to reevaluate that holiday schedule with the FY23 budget. So, in just another six months or so.
Okay. Thank you. Great work.
Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
So my question had to do with the nodes too, and why the amenities in one node and not the others. And I understand then, this is going to evolve over time as we get more data and understand. And I know what I'm going to say now is like the chicken and the egg. In order to have a really successful transit system, you've got to have the frequency, but it also needs to be comfortable, and the shelters matter, and the bench matters. All that really matters. But I'm really concerned about investing all of that infrastructure when we're not even sure we're going to keep a node there. So, so again, I know that's like chicken and the egg, but how easy is it going to be for us to move these nodes and take that infrastructure with us if we're moving those around?
Yeah. Relatively easy. It won't be, it certainly won't be impossible. The, those amenities are essentially all going to be bolted into the concrete. So if we did decide to completely abandon a node or just remove the amenities from a node and want to place them at another node, we will have the ability to do that.
Okay. Okay. And, and just for those that, because there are certain pockets in town that have a really long walk to get to a node, and I'm thinking about Mooresville Parkway. There's thousands of people that live up and down Mooresville Parkway, and yet they're not really going to be close to this one node. So how easy is it going to be to add a node over time?
It'll, it.
Move one, but actually add one.
It should be, again, relatively easy. There'll be things we'll have to look at. Certainly, we'll be able to get an idea of demand, and that'll be a major driver. And then the other side of it is just working with GoCarry. Because they are operating the shuttles, they have to agree to, you know, where, where the shuttles will stop. And that has been one of the things we've spent a lot of time working with them on, is determining the best location. And that's how some of the node locations were determined. You know, that's why some of them may look a little bit, to be in a little bit weird location is, because it made the best, it was the best location for the shuttle to be able to pull off out of traffic or stop in traffic. Mooresville Parkway is one of those locations. We, we struggled with that. You know, we wanted to get a node in that, in that area, but we struggled with where that should be and whether there should be more than one. But that's where we ended up, starting with one, knowing that we can always add more in the future.
Yeah, because even, even for the Aquatics and Fitness Center, it's not that close. But, but it's, it's close to obviously Mooresville Elementary School and the entrance to the park. So you've got, you know, I get it.
Yeah. And one thing, hopefully, that'll help that a little bit, that some of the distance concerns, is that the shuttles will have bike racks on them. So folks will be able to, there will be a couple of node, there will be at least one or two nodes that have a bike rack at the node, but there will also be bike racks on the shuttles themselves. So folks will be able to ride their bike, put the bike on the shuttle, ride to it, and then ride somewhere else. So hopefully, that helps a little bit with some of that first-mile, last-mile concern. But as, you know, as you know, from being in Campo and Wake Transit, that's one of the biggest concerns in transit. And this is, you know, something that we've struggled with, with developing the service. And we think we have a, we think we have a good starting place, but we'll just have to, you know, ultimately put it out there and see how it does.
And evaluate it as we move on.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm excited about this too. So thank you for all your work to get us to this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember O.
Thank you. Most of my points and questions have been raised, but I just wanted to reiterate, I guess, as we complete this, as we roll the marketing out of this program, when will it be in the process of evaluating the data, you know, in terms of usage? Is there expectations we have based on, you know, what CARRY has done with their services of what we would define as success? Or will we have to reevaluate? Would this be incorporated? The follow-up is, as we look at algorithms, like Councilmember Garamella said, how would this integrate into our, like, Open Data and Smart City initiatives so we could get visibility, not only for the staff, but for the citizens who could look in and go, oh, you know, this neighborhood's using it a lot, so now maybe I want to use it more?
So we, we have confirmed, and we've talked with our technology vendor, we will be able to extract data from the dashboard that we'll have access to and post that out to the Open Data portal. So we will be able to make our data available. As far as sort of review time and everything, at a minimum, we are, we will be required to report, to make reports to Wake Transit every quarter. And so, starting out, what our plan is to, is really to try and provide council a little bit more regular updates than that, at least on some broad data, you know, primarily looking at ridership and, and some very high-level data, just to, so you can see, you know, relatively quickly how the shuttle is doing. But then we do, we are looking to, you know, probably start providing you more detailed reporting, at least quarterly. reporting, at least quarterly, as we do that Wake Transit report, so that we can also start looking and providing you trends to say, you know, it, because it, and the other thing to remember with this service, with starting a new transit service like this, it takes time for people to begin using it, and it takes time for that data and for, for the ridership to build up. So, you know, we could start giving you information immediately, but it may not mean a whole lot until we have several months worth and we can show you trends to show you that, oh, the ridership is increasing, or, you know, at this location, at this particular node, the ridership jumped, you know. So we'll, we'll be able to provide you that information, but it'll, it'll take a little bit of time as, once we get the service started.
It might be like a certain demographic, like the senior communities that are retired, that don't have as much rush, they might be able to wait longer. But if someone's working or they're leveraging this to go to meetings, like Councilmember Garamallo said, I mean, you know, you know, 16 minutes, that's a long time. In my own experience, I've always wanted to use bus more, but the fact is, even if I wait 10 minutes, I'm like, I don't want to do it, I've got to get in the car and go.
Yeah. And, yeah, I mean with, I will say with this service design, this is, this service design is a choice service. It is not, it, it is not designed and it will not be able to be a service that someone, you know, can necessarily rely on to get from point A to point B at a certain time every single day. It is going to, at least starting out, it's going to have to be more of that choice. But again, we're hoping that over time, we're providing that additional mobility choice and then we'll be able to start getting data to determine, to be able to see where that ridership really is. Hopefully, over a couple of years, we'll be able to accumulate enough data where we may be able to come back and say, okay, we know the smart shuttle is successful, here's, you know, but based on smart shuttle data, we can now say with more certainty, we think we could put a fixed route and, you know, and have a more regular, you know, bus service in a certain area or, you know, hitting certain areas because we would have this data from the smart shuttle.
Yeah. As the mayor Protam said, the, the thing we don't want is, is that chicken and egg argument, having all this infrastructure and not being used.
Exactly. So it's, this is, you know, and, and we went through a lot of this with this public transportation study a couple of years ago that recommended this service is, you know, we looked at all different kinds of service. And this was a way that we can begin providing this mobility option to our residents at a relatively affordable price and, but we can also modify it and expand it as needed as we move, move along.
Thank you.
Okay. And you mentioned relatively affordable price. This will be free to everybody.
To the residents, correct.
Which is pretty nice. And one other thing about the events and things, now that we're going to have all the nodes and people will be familiar with them, we can essentially go analog, like we have the, we used our own shuttles and we had a contractor for July 3rd bringing people down from Cedar Fork. So we could do things like that for events. So it's not out of the question to do that outside of this service and just say there's going to be shuttle every 15 minutes for our bigger events and things. So this has been a lot of work, a lot of collaboration with Town of Cary. So we really thank you for all of that. And I don't see any other questions. And now it's time to move on to the next step. I entertain a motion to adopt a resolution, so we can keep moving forward.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2021-240-0.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries six, zero unanimously. Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
And we look forward to riding.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we are on new items. There is one new item on tonight's agenda, a resolution appointing advisory committee members. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will facilitate the item. Mr. Smith.
Right. Give me just a moment to pull this up. Good evening, Mayor Colley and members of council. Official recruitment for the summer appointments began on May 24th and closed on July the 2nd. During the previous recruitment briefings, I have stated various times that staff would seek opportunities for increased engagement related to our committees. So to, to meet these promises and to enhance our engagement during this period, staff implemented various in-person recruitment and flyer distribution at various events and locations throughout Mooresville. These locations included the MAFC, the Senior Center, the Healthy Food Hub, and events such as the July 3rd Family Fun Festival. This allows staff to engage directly with the community and answer any questions that possible applicants could have related to the committees. Staff also felt that some of the committees received consistency, consistence, consistently low application numbers due to the community being unaware of the committee's purpose or the role that the committees play as a, in the advisory role that the committees play to the town council. So to address this, in collaboration with the Communications Department, we did implement a daily committee spotlight within the town's social media pages during this recruitment cycle. These posts just highlighted the purposes and the duties of each community in hopes of just raising community awareness regarding what that actual committee did. We did see a noticeable increase in the applicants following this type of engagement. So staff is going to continue to do the in-person recruitment at various town events, at various town meeting locations throughout the year, just to increase our existing application pool. During this recruitment cycle, we did see 12 new applications and we had 10 remaining applications from the previous 12 months. Council received the full appointment packet via email on July the 9th and are asked to return the completed electronic ballots by July 20th at 5:00 PM. We do hope to announce the results of the balloting at the July 27th Town Council meeting. There are a couple of key details I want to remind you of that are also included within that email to council. These details are going to be regarding the Planning and Zoning Board and the Public Education Advisory Committee. If a PCB alternate is selected for appointment to the vacated PCB seat, I do plan to email a secondary ballot on the morning of July 22nd to fill that PCB alternate vacancy. We will also hope to announce the results of that balloting at the July 27th meeting. Regarding MPAC, to meet the district minimums, council is going to need to appoint one applicant from District 4. As there are no applicants from District 3, council can select any of the applicants to, to fill the remaining vacancies. If council does appoint all eligible applicants, there will be one outstanding vacancy that will need to be filled with a candidate from District 3 in a future recruitment cycle. As always, I do want council to remember that when completing the balloting, you are asked to select up to the number of selected applicants. So you do not need to, and you aren't obligated to select all the applicants in an effort to fill all the committee vacancies. At your discretion, you can leave a seat vacant, you can request that we complete further recruitment and extend the recruitment period, just to generate a larger pool of eligible cap, eligible applicants. And I'll now open the floor for any questions or comments from council.
We appreciate the system that you've implemented to make it easier to get this done in a timely fashion. I don't see any questions at this time, so I think we understand the process and our obligation, or our commitment to get those back to you in a timely fashion, so we can keep this moving forward and make sure our committees are functioning as intended. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll now move on to item 12, presentations. We have two presentations tonight, a quarterly economic development report and a Harris Mill Fire Station project update. Linda Fournette, Mooresville Chamber of Commerce President, will make the first presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Colley and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, and I thank you for taking the time to read the report and spreadsheet, or of the request for information and proposals that, that we answered this past quarter. As you could see, we had another 17 RFIs in the second quarter, and the common denominator among those tends to, once again, be life science companies, looking at, at Mooresville as well as all of Wake County. The recent report from the Wake Economic Development Commission is that over the next five years, the projected growth in life sciences nationwide is expected to be 6%, but in the triangle that will be 7.2%. So we are still looking at rapid growth in the life sciences, no slowdown there. And in fact, we were just notified today by Wake EDC to expect an increase in RFIs. Some projects that were put on a pause during the pandemic are now being activated again, so we expect to be very busy over the next quarter. Some of the deciding factors in projects, the top strength for this area tends to remain the talent pipeline, and the largest weakness for this area still tends to be the lack of public transit compared to other cities across the country. If you have any questions about the report or any of the prospects that came through us, to us, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
I'd like to say, keep up the great work. It's going really well. We appreciate you bringing things forward to us. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? Councilmember O, please.
No, I just, excuse me. The report was very helpful. I think we're just getting so much momentum, so just wanted to encourage you to continue to do great work. One thing, two things that I think we'd be interested in down the road is I know that we're going to be getting American Recovery money for small business development. So we know you're going to be working with our staff in terms of how we could coordinate, you know, assistance for small businesses that have had trouble during the pandemic. You don't have to talk about it today, but just whatever you can email us would be great. And then the entrepreneurship, you know, we had the activation program that stopped. I don't know whether there's efforts being made to work with Wake County launch, you know, some of our new developments, we're looking at creating innovation districts, you know, a downtown plan, maybe having an incubator. So some way we could continue to work with the chamber so that startups have a place to go. And so maybe that's something that, I know you, you haven't been with us too long, but whatever we can do to work with you to support that would be.
I appreciate that. Conversations do continue to look at how we can support entrepreneurship as well as potentially supporting the, the Wake Tech Launch Program. Yes. We appreciate every opportunity to partner with the town.
Great. Councilmember Garamallo, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
No, I just want to say, you know, I'm truly, truly appreciative of what the chamber does and, or a period of years, all the, you know, economic development projects that come. And really, you guys are spearheading it and the town is what it is because of all the effort that the chamber puts in along with the town. And really appreciate it for this collaboration.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, it's still new to me what all the chamber does. So I just had a question, like what criteria do you use to determine when you submit on an RFI and when you don't? Because I was looking at a couple here, like the most recent one, it was biomanufacturing and we didn't submit. So what, what, like what was the reasoning?
Sure. The project comes to us with a number of criteria, starting with the size of the building or the amount of land that they're looking for. And then it can get as detailed as, you know, the, the ceiling height, if there are dock doors and how many are required, if the building would allow them to be a single tenant, multi-tenant. There's many, many criteria and they're all different for each prospect. That's why a great amount of time is devoted to each and everyone. And sometimes we might meet every criteria except maybe the capacity for electrical usage or water, and then that takes us out of the picture. So a lot of research goes into every request and we address every one, no matter how unusual they might seem. You can see in this last quarter, we even received a request for a former, former airport. So they are varied and they're always very interesting.
Okay, so it's more of a criteria that we do not meet as opposed to us choosing not to submit?
That's correct. We don't arbitrarily make that decision. I answer every RFI that we are, that we meet the criteria for.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. We look forward to you bringing forward more things. Let us know how we can continue to support the chamber.
Thank you so much. I want to thank you for placing your trust in the chamber to represent and serve the Town of Mooresville.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mark Spanioli, Town Engineer, will present the Harris Mill Fire Station project update.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members. Just for the record, Mark Spanioli, Town Engineer. It's good to be here again this evening. Tonight, we have a project update presentation on the Harris Mill Fire Station, just to give you a quick overview on what we've been doing over the last few months and where we're going with the project. So we're going to just take a quick couple of minutes just to go over the, the project details. We're going to give you a quick overview, starting with our site plan. Just, just to give a quick reminder, the project is right off Harris Mill Road, just north of McCrimmon. The town owns approximately 6.3 acres, that's the site size, and we're taking up about two acres for the new fire station site. We've got a shared driveway with the developments to the south. You can see that on, on the bottom of the picture. And that shared driveway provides access for the trucks to enter and circle around the back of the station and enter into the apparatus bay and be able to exit out onto the main driveway when they need to leave for an emergency situation. We're also providing 24 parking spaces on the site plan. Digging a little deeper and getting into the actual floor plan of the project, the total building size is just a little over 16,000 square feet. That includes a second floor mezzanine storage space. We're, we're taking up approximately 11,000 and change for the, for our fire station use. Wake County EMS will be occupying about 20, 2,200 square feet of space, and there's a shared space together of approximately 2,675 square feet. Development program includes three offices, nine bedrooms, eight restrooms, a kitchen, day rooms, exercise room, and various other storage areas and accessory rooms. The apparatus bay where the, where the vehicles will be parked for our Mooresville station is approximately 4,000 square feet, and we'll be housing a quint, a reserve truck, squad, and battalion chief vehicles there. The EMS bay is about 925 square feet, and there's where the ambulance will be stored. Not sure if everyone here has seen the rendering, there are a few that we've developed. This gives you a general flavor and character of the front facade of the building. As you can see here, it's, it's going to be a brick, brick facade with numerous moldings and trim work. Onings will be overhead on all the windows to provide a little heat, less heat exposure. We've got the tower feature that kind of end caps the structure and provides an entryway for pedestrian access. And all the main doorways have arch, archways. And as you can see from the elevation, you've got dimensional in and outs with varying height sizes or size, heights of the walls of the building. So our current project status, the project's in the design phase. We've been working on that since, since last October. The design development has been completed, that's the second phase of our design process that we follow. The site plan has been resubmitted to the planning department for review. We've completed design development level estimating for the project, so we're, we've got that, and we're going to show you that this evening. And our construction document phase will be starting this month. So let's spend a little time talking about the, our, our project budget. As you recall, it's from our last update in October, we had split the project, because it is a design-build project, into two phases. Phase one is our design phase. So as a reminder, this is a collaboration between the town and Wake County EMS. For our phase one construction phase, we've allocated $427,500 from capital reserves of, of the town. And we also have an inter-local agreement with Wake County for the design at $47,500. And that totals for phase one, $475,000. And that's already been allocated right now. So for phase two, which is our construction phase, we have a, a commitment from Mooresville of 5.85 million. That includes the J. Moores Commons Lanes extension. And right now, we have a commitment from Wake County EMS. They're occupying approximately 16% of the, of the project site, so that, that equates about $900,000. So that, that gives a total phase two commitment of about $6.75 million. So sustainability- So sustainability, as you all know, this is a very important topic to the town and to the town council. So we wanted to go over this in some detail. The original project program did not include sustainability. When we went to the design-build team, we did not make that part of the project program. But we knew at some point we would have to develop sustainability as part of the project. So the design team, along with our internal partners, Public Works, the Fire Department, and engineering work closely together. And we're proposing to incorporate the following sustainability items, and they're listed here. So there'll be two electric vehicle charging stations at the project site. We're going to completely install a solar photovoltaic system. And this is very similar to what we put on Fire Station One. It should provide 30 to 40% of the power to the building, so that's a great savings for us. And this equates to a reduction of 30 metric tons per year of carbon footprint. We're going to include a building automation system in the project. We're going to have energy-efficient appliances, plumbing fixtures and lighting throughout the building, touchless fixtures with auto-off sensors, occupancy and vacancy sensors with auto-off as well. We're going to put energy-efficient windows throughout the facility. We're going to make sure all the windows are operable to allow for fresh air at different times of the year. And we're going to add additional onings on all the buildings to reduce some of the heat load on the building. We're also going to have, we're going to incorporate material waste diversion, so that what that means is during construction, when there's waste materials that are being generated, they're not sent to the landfill, they're actually separated and sent to the appropriate places for recycling. We're also including some other UV air filtration as part of our sustainability and getting involved with potential health and safety instances. So bringing that all together, we're going to talk a little bit here about how our budget compares with our estimates. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a phase two committed budget of $6.75 million. The actual construction costs that we have estimated right now is $5.7. The sustainability items have a price tag of $560,000. J. Morris Common Lane is coming in at about $250,000, our estimate, and we are saving an owner's contingency of $240,000. And that actually brings you to $6.75. So we're comfortable that we're on budget, even including sustainability items, between our funding and the funding we're getting from Wake County EMS. So our project timeline, we've been working on design since last October. It's ongoing until we get to about September. We're working on our construction funding. As you know, this is one of the items that's proposed as part of the GOB funding, so we're going to be looking towards that if that money comes in. We'll be working with Wake County EMS now on another interlocal agreement for phase two of the construction. They've already committed that money in their upcoming capital program. We have construction documents will be on their way this month, and they'll be going on through January of 2022. At that same time, we'll be bidding out the project for actual construction. And then our contract award will come back either February or March of 2022. This was somewhat intentional. I think at first, we were thinking we might start a little earlier, but I think based on the weather, we prefer to start in the spring, late winter, early spring. And then the project has approximately a one-year, 12-month timeframe for construction, so it'll be open for business in the spring of 2023. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, Mark. This is a question more for our chief here. How many people at any point of time will be there in the fire station?
I don't know the answer.
Uh-oh. No.
Scott Krittl, Fire Chief. And initially, we're going to, the plan's to relocate Pumper Three, the company from Station Three, actually, ladder 23, up there. So initially, it'll be a battalion chief and three firefighters. As we add staff, it could go up about two more. It's designed to go to two companies if ever necessary with maximum staffing of four. So it's built for the future. And then we had them design in area to add even more bedrooms if necessary. You never know, 50 years down the road, fire trucks may be riding around with six. There's six seats in the truck. So there's maximum buildability in this place. We can expand to whatever could be dreamed up.
The reason I was asking, when I looked it up, it shows eight bedrooms and nine restrooms.
Correct.
So I was kind of curious, why do you need so many restrooms?
Well, there's general use bed, well, Wake County EMS has two. There's a general use in the front, and there's a decon bathroom in case the staff comes in from a bed bug, you know, hazmat call. They can get in from the outside without contaminating any part of the building. And then there's, I think, four general use bathrooms for the dorms. There's eight bedrooms because ultimately, in the 50 years, I anticipate the most it would grow would be to two company station with max four people per truck, but that expandability was built in there just in case I'm wrong.
Yeah, this pretty much looks like a five-star hotel. They're naming after Krittl.
Krittl Station Three.
Krittl Station Three. I got to tell that, otherwise I cannot leave without that.
What was that?
I got to tell that, that, you know, they have to name it after you.
All right. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thanks. I had a question about the restrooms, and it kind of makes sense because, and excellent, I think the sustainability is good. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I had a question about the sustainability cost, that $560,000. I'm just curious, because is that incremental cost or total cost? Because you would still have appliances and fixtures, and you would still have some sort of building automation system, whether it was sustainable or not. So is that, does that 560 include incremental cost? Or is it including costs that you would have anyway?
In this case, it's incremental cost. We did that evaluation and breakdown, so this would be the additional cost for the sustainability item. So yeah, you're right. There are some things that would be built into the building just as a building and a fire station. This is the additional cost.
Okay. And then mechanical systems, is that just the HVAC system? You would be adding the ionization on?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
So that schematic of the inside of the building was really hard to read. And I don't need to see, I don't need to see a good one, but is there a conference room or a training room in there, too, like there is in Fire Station One, that's used so heavily by lots of folks?
Yes, there are, there are spaces in the building for meetings and stuff like that. There's like a day room, and also the kitchen seating area is a convertible room that can be used also for that kind of thing, yes.
Okay, so it's large, like the one we have right in?
It's almost as large, yes.
Okay. And that's, obviously, you're all okay with that. It'll meet your needs.
Yeah, we worked, we actually, this, this project, the town spent a lot of time internally working as a collaborative team. We've got every department meeting together to make sure that we meet everybody's needs, including obviously the Fire Department, number one, but making sure that we're hitting all those other areas that we might miss. Maintenance things, Public Works always pointing out, look, we got to make sure we have certain maintenance closets and so forth. So we made sure we incorporated a lot into the building.
Okay, good, good. And then it's a beautiful building, I will tell you.
It is nice.
Gorgeous building. So I am, I am looking forward to this, and I am so pleased at the timeline that you have gone out for bid, construction bid in January of 2022. You know, and we've talked at council about the fact that when we go for these bonds, we want to make sure that they are for projects that we're going to initiate as quickly as possible and come to fruition as quickly as possible so that there's not a big lag time between when, when the public votes on the bonds and when they, they see what, what the bonds represent. They actually see what comes up out of the ground. So I am really thrilled that we've done all this work to this point and that we're on, on target to get this project moving and hopefully complete in the spring of 2023.
Yeah, we see no reason not to meet the timelines that are shown here. The project is moving very well. The design team that we've hired, where the design-build team has been working with us, outstanding. And yeah, we see no reason we won't meet the timeline.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd like that you guys collaborated, built this from the ground up, so it meets our needs for up to 50 years, as the chief has said, so we really appreciate that. Councilmember Abadi, please.
Yeah, I want to echo what Liz said about the timeline. I think it's really important when we're going out for a bond that we can tell people that projects are shuttle-ready. One question that I did have, all right, what was my question? Okay, go on. I have no idea what my question was.
Call me or email me, I have it answered.
We know how to get it. You're going to have to.
Have it answered.
Everyone's had a chance. I'd like to get for a second round of questions or comments if people wish.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just remembered my question.
I'll circle back to Councilmember Abadi.
Sorry about that. Will we be able to get any of the, will we be able to reimburse ourselves for any of the money that we've already spent on the design? I mean, the design, I remember, was pretty expensive. And a follow-up question, will we be reusing this design for the next fire station, Fire Station Two?
I will ask, I answer the second question while Jeannie comes up. Yeah, when we actually developed the design of this building, we developed it with the intent that we could pretty much use the floor plan and site plan. Well, you got to modify the site plan to fit the other site, but the floor plan and the basic building was to fit the other site as well.
Okay, great.
So we did adopt a resolution of intent to reimburse ourselves for land acquisition costs that was primarily the biggest expense. I believe the design cost was around $475.
Right.
And it was designing for two facilities, basically. Okay, thank you.
Okay, circling back, Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Mark, my question was more about the first slide. It is a six-point-some acres, right, land, and we are using only two. So is there a room for four acres that's almost close to, in this present rate, like $1.5 million? Any plans on, like, is that area usable? Or do we have in this current design that has a mechanism of developing the rest of the other area? Like, if you go back to the schematics of it, yeah, this particular one, I see the parking lots are there, and then, you know, you have the access road. If we come up with something in the future to use the four and a half acres, how do we plug and play with this particular map?
Yeah, so that's a great question. We are preserving the rest of the property for future development or sale or whatever the town decides. The shared access driveway will provide future access to the rest of the property. And also, the way we're bringing in our infrastructure for water and sewer is for future connection, if needed, for the rest of the property. So we are taking that into consideration.
And is that for, like, 4.3 acres usable or like?
Yes.
Grade and, okay.
Yes, they are.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, your description of, I can't find it now on the slide, about how construction waste is managed to reduce the waste or recycle it, made me think, are the engineers going for lead design?
No, no, there's no redesign. We're going to, we're going to make that part of the contractor's package when, during construction, they would have to follow those guidelines.
Okay. Because I know, like, this same architect has done, the fire station they did for Cary that's very similar to the design as this one, is lead certified. But they're, we're not doing lead certification for this fire station.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Abadi?
Why aren't we doing lead certification for this fire station?
Well, it wasn't originally contemplated, and essentially, we're doing pretty much a lot of the things that would be required to be lead certified without having to go through the process and paying the extra money. Essentially, you'd have to pump in another probably close to $100,000 in design and another couple hundred thousand just in construction costs, just to get certified. So it's, we're, we're getting the same benefit without paying for the extra certification.
Okay. I think we are all very pleased with this project.
Very good.
And its progress. So thank you very much for all your hard work and your collaboration with all the different departments through town to make this happen. So please let us know how else we can support it.
Appreciate that. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. We are now at item 13, future meetings, events. For a full listing of events, you can always please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. We've got a lot of good things coming up, so this is going to take a second. Next Tuesday, July 20th, we will have a work session, and our next regular meeting is in two weeks, on Tuesday, July 27th. We mentioned that a couple of times. On July 24th, please fill the Public Works truck with food. We're having a food drive and a shred event. Saturday, July 24th, you bring your food donations to Morrisville's Fill the Public Works Food Truck food drive event and help support families with food needs. Food will be distributed through Durkis Ministries and will remain near the Town of Morrisville limits whenever possible. Most needed items include canned fruits and vegetables, canned meat, canned beans and soup, cereal, whole grain pasta and rice, and peanut butter. No glass, please. The town will also provide a free document shredding. The Morrisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department will hold a free shred event on that same Saturday, July 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at 240 Town Hall Drive behind the Town Hall Connector Building in Morrisville. On July 18th, we have our Sunday pop-up dog park. It's rescheduled from last Sunday, so Morrisville residents can still sign up, and you see our website or social media for that. August 1st is our next scheduled pop-up dog park. Registration for that will open soon. And we also have ongoing sidewalk repairs and street maintenance throughout town. Please see our website for details about which neighborhoods are underway at this time. That's it for upcoming events. As I said, you can also check the website. We're now at Council and Manager Comments. I'd like to start with myself, actually, since Councilmember Scruggs-Johnson is not here. I'd like to give a big shout-out to our Parks and Rec staff, communications, and all who helped make July 3rd such a success. I think we're all going to be echoing that. I was so happy to see so many people enjoying the outdoors along Town Hall Drive and our healthy food hub. Captain Mike is, always makes me laugh. Our new ladder 22 was a big hit as well, and I look forward to going up in the bucket soon. Looking forward to that. I believe the training was last week, so is that in operation now, sir?
Not so.
Not quite. Not yet. Okay, we're getting there. Thank you again, Parks and Rec and Public Works staff and countless volunteers, and congratulations to USA Cricket and our local cricket organizations, including Triangle Cricket League, for hosting the first Women's Regionals Tournament at Church Street Park over the Fourth of July weekend. There was some very exciting play, including a game-winning run on the very last ball. The women continue their matches to determine who will represent the United States at international tournaments this upcoming year. I want to do a little shout-out to local resident Chris Cuddy, and she and the Veterans Corps organized today's food drive for veterans. There is a need, and I was happy to donate and help load up the vehicles. And Western Regional Food Security is continuing their distribution of free meals to any in need. This month, it's at Morrisville Elementary, Saturday, the 17th, from 11:30 a.m. till 1:00 p.m., and on July 31st of this month as well. That's all I've got. Now I'd like to recognize Councilmember Abadi, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. Agree with what TJ said. Congratulations to everyone for the July 3rd event, it was amazing. There is a blood drive at the Western Wake Farmer's Market on July 31st. I believe it's from 9:00 to 1:00 or 9:00 to 12:00. So if you haven't given blood in a while, please go sign up for that. Yeah, I believe that's it. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Fender, please.
I don't have any comments.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you, just a couple. First of all, I don't know if I had a chance to thank Chief Krittl and the Fire Department, but we still pray for the Kelly home, and I can't tell you how many Morrisville citizens come to me and just are so emotional with how proud they are of the work our Fire Department did. So just want to thank all of our crews, if you can convey that to the team. It was a great cricket tournament, and want to thank USA Women's Cricket for playing in Morrisville. And Randy Little was out there, and all the volunteers, and Jerry Allen, just the whole team. It was a great day. July 3rd Family Fun Festival was excellent, and special thanks to the Small July 3rd Family Fun Festival was excellent and special thanks to the small businesses who participated in the business fair and all the food trucks. And I just have two final points. One is, I really want to thank Congresswoman Deborah Ross for being so active in Morrisville. I can't remember a time when we've had a member of Congress spend so much time. This last week she visited the chamber, she hosted a clean tech roundtable at Wake Tech, which was very informative. She spent time with some leaders of the Indian community at Wake Tech RTP with Congressman Price to talk about the COVID India crisis. And she spent a lot of time with the Indian American community, learning the issues on immigration and actually recently co-sponsored a bill with the US Congressman Roger Krishnamurti on helping the children of H1B holders. So I just want to thank her so much for being so active in Morrisville and her staff. And the final point is, um, we had a, recently a tragedy in the Nepali community where Mr. Amit Bharati, who was only 30 years old and lived in Kit Creek, passed away for complications of COVID-19. He actually had been on, there was an article in WAL about this, but he had been in Nepal and on a business trip or visiting some family. And he came back, they got him back to Duke and he died a few days later. And so I just want to convey our condolences to the community. One of the things that I mentioned to the community was this, that it's so important to get vaccines out to these countries. And so whatever we can do to get, you know, awareness of just getting, donating vaccines and oxygen. And he was a great entrepreneur and a technology guy. And so I think it's inspiring that he lived such a life of inspiration here, just in, you know, in Morrisville. So I, I just wanted to give a shout out to all of the Nepalese community that helped his family, raised the money for the funeral and all those things. So thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor Pretam Johnson.
So my condolences as well. He was a young man who had a bright future ahead of him. So to, amidst family and friends, I extend my condolences and wish you peace and comfort in, in the days ahead. I, I'm going to try not to repeat a lot that's been said. So I just, I, I do need to say thank you to everyone on staff that participated and made the July 3rd Family Fun Event so successful. I did not know what to expect coming out of, you know, a pandemic and how many people would come out. And you all did a fantastic job because we had a tremendous crowd. So, and I know there were multiple departments involved. So thank you all so very much for that. It is really nice to be able to be with people again outside at a, at a family fun event. So thank you all so much. And the one thing I'm going to ask Martha, if you could, I'm going to make a request and y'all can, you know, do what, figure out how you can deal with it. But I had a, a long time Morrisville resident recently tell me that he did not realize that we had a weekly e-newsletter, The Next Week in Morrisville. And so that really got me thinking, we have many new people that are moving here into town, whether that be in the new developments that are here or folks, well, there are not too many people selling houses, there's not much on the market. But, you know, we, we have turnover in, in our residential community. So if we could somehow advertise and, and let people know, and I realize that's really hard because the only way we can advertise these, these features that we offer is on social media. And if you're not on social media, you're never going to find out there's a Next Week in Morrisville. But anyhow, I think it's worth the effort to constantly remind folks of the information that's out there for them if they choose to partake. And of course there's, there, Next Week in Morrisville is not the only topic. There's a transportation topic, a Parks and Recs topic, there's a weather hotline. There are, there are all kinds of newsletters you can sign up for based on your interests. So it might be worth kind of sharing that again. And even, well, actually we have our own kind of newsletter that we mail that, that might be helpful too. But that's just a, however y'all wanted, you know, deal with that, it might be worth sharing again with the public. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella.
I think everything has been echoed and kudos to the staff for pulling the July 3 event. That was awesome. And the only compliment, and Martha, like you may want to watch out is I sat sometime with Jeannie in the booth and she said she's ready to recruit me and so did Benjamin. So. So you keep up, you know, watch out. But it was a good event, you know?
Okay. Excellent. I'd like to recognize Assistant Manager Zudima for an update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. He doesn't know this, but I'm going to ask Randy to come up here for just a second, since he was kind enough to be here for the whole meeting because he wants to learn more about what's going on in his new town. But I'm, I'm actually pleased to make a presentation sort of on behalf of Wake County tonight. So as you know, we worked collaboratively with Wake County government to conduct testing for COVID at Morrisville Community Park. And so Rachelle Wood, who was the coordinator from Wake County, had reached out. She apologized she could not be here tonight, but she came by the other day and presented a plaque that she wanted us to share with you. And because it was done in our parks, it is presented to the Parks and Rec Department. So I'm going to present it to Randy to perhaps display. But I will tell you that before I read that to you, we did 13 days and over those 13 days, they did 1,037 tests in Morrisville. So more than 80 a day on average over the course of those 13 days. So they have provided a plaque that reads, "Special recognition for your contribution to protecting our community from COVID-19," presented to the Town of Morrisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources. Thank you for your partnership hosting free COVID-19 testing in your parks, presented by Wake County Public Health. So I'm going to present that to you. And just a very quick thank you to both our Parks and Rec and Public Works staff. So Parks and Rec and Athletics made some accommodations to make that happen. And Public Works, particularly the Community Enhancement Team, also made some accommodations to make that happen for us. So thank you.
That is wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that great news and great efforts by our departments. And we haven't mentioned it enough, but vaccinations are still really important for our residents who haven't chosen to get them yet. So anything that we can do to try to really put this behind us, that is a really big step. So thank you all for that. Anything else for the good of the order, Town Manager Page? Okay. At this time, we have two closed sessions this evening to discuss real property acquisition and discuss a personnel matter. We don't plan to have any other public business afterwards. So I'd like to say before we enter closed session, thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your Town Council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I would ask for a motion to enter into closed session.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'll move us into closed session.
Please do, sir.
Pursuant to North Carolina statute 143.318-11A5, I move that we go into closed session for purposes of discussing a real property acquisition matter. And pursuant to 143.318-11A6, I move that we go into closed session for discussion of a personnel matter.
I'll second.
A motion to second. All those in favor of going to closed session, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carys 6-0 unanimously. We are now in closed session.